They didn't give you keys to this place? What are we doing?
When one is mayor, you don't have keys to the place.
And I don't want keys to the place. All right, well, we are now approaching the four o'clock hour. Shall we get started with... I call the City of Sonora City Council regular meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 to order. May we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Segersham here. Vice Mayor Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Levine.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Here.
Councilmember Opie is running late and will be here for open session.
For open session and closed session or just open session? Okay. I don't know why I felt like I needed to confirm that, but anyway.
It's nice to know.
All right, yes, and okay. All the clamoring crowd, would we like to add some public comment? I guess not. So seeing no public comment, we will close public comment and adjourn into closed session at 4:01.
We are reconvening from closed session and direction was given to staff. Pledge of allegiance. Andy, could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Sagerstrom here. Vice Mayor Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Levine here. Councilmember Opie.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Here.
And the agenda posting?
At 10:52 on the 17th day of October 2025, the agenda for today's City of Sonora Council meeting was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. Any comments from the council on the agenda?
Seeing none, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll say again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Agenda is approved. We move to public comment for non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation.
Hi, Barbara Dressler. On October 6, 2025, the City of Sonora through Melissa Eads gave Dewberry Engineering Task Order 25-6 to submit a grant application for the Sonora Creek Restoration and Parking Lot Removal and Replacement Plan. In their acceptance of the task order, which I think has not been signed yet by the city, I'm not sure, this study will evaluate the feasibility and benefits of converting this parking lot into a retention basin to slow down large stormwater flows. An important component of this study will be the identification of alternative parking options and locations for the farmer's market. So my question, shouldn't the study come before the grant application? The City of Sonora has no plan at this time where else to put treasured a treasured community farmer's market or any idea how to replace 40 parking spaces. In the past, the city has been through these searches for alternatives many, many times. Is this how this plays out? The city is trying to meet a fast approaching deadline, a consultant agrees to study options running up a steep fee, applying for a grant without resolving parking and relocation of the farmer's market, and without public input. No one I know, everybody I've talked to, has no idea that this is happening until we found out about it recently. The city council eventually decides they must proceed with the project so that the fees paid to the consultant can be justified. This has been a pattern in Sonora's administration for decades. I lived downtown in downtown Sonora and experienced the big flood. There is no way that the area of the farmer's market parking lot would contain that. That event, considered very extreme, did not create damage that would justify tearing up our historical and commercial district in the heart of Sonora. Everyone I speak to universally thinks this is an insanely irresponsible plan. Without rational consideration by the administration of our seriously, this damages our cherished community spaces. Before any grant application or consultant fees are paid or this document signed by the city, the community should have the choice in this proposal, and I'm all but certain what that will be. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mike Lemke, housing enthusiast, everything housing local. Earlier at the beginning of this year, the council graciously was interested in my Earlier at the beginning of this year, the council graciously was interested in my reporting back on success stories and learning curves that we've had on the city, and I had requested 10 minutes. To date, we haven't had that opportunity. I understand your schedule's been quite compacted and busy this year, and I understand, but year-end's coming and I have a goal of starting this process with you, so I'm gonna start taking three-minute chunks each time. Mike Lemke, I was one of the people typical, left the area, looked for opportunity in the big city, grew up in a housing development building family, and stake my claim out there in the corporate world, being an employee for the last many years. Found great success. I thought I was gonna learn a lot, and I actually wound up teaching a lot. I didn't bring a lot of high-level degrees with me, but I actually brought something a little bit better. I brought skills of building on slopes and in congested areas. I understood how to do infrastructure up here. Brought those skill sets back to our family company to try to do what I did down there up here, have effective housing growth. We've had some success. The bungalows right downtown, we had told the city council a year prior to us starting what we're gonna do, how we're gonna plan, and we went in and we did the job. We completed it, and we have occupancies there. This was a failed neighborhood, crashed and burned, never should've, infrastructure was there, it failed and crashed and went bankrupt. We came in and completed the neighborhood for the folks. There's learning curves there, I'd love to share those with you, and I will. Another neighborhood that we successfully did the same thing, three other parties went broke in front of us, it was the Sierra Meadows neighborhood. It had a lot of challenges. The county at the time, this was a county project, they had incorporated a 10% taking of product. You build, you build your store, you pay for everything, you pay for your employees, you stock your shelves, you pay for your taxes, you pay for everything, and then the government entity comes in, takes claim, regulates how much you'll sell the price, when you will build it, who you will sell to, regardless of your cost. That broke everybody in front of us. We survived, we performed, we delivered the neighborhood. Very difficult, but we did it. Locally, Oak Park neighborhood, the city had a project, you don't know about it. It never came to materialization. Fifty-nine homes that would've been built, lot of affordable housing. The city of Sonora got on the bandwagon and decided to make a 20% taking on that project. Similar conditions. This project would've given us a cut across, cross the north end, brought in infrastructure, helped out fire, and brought 59 homes to families locally at affordable price. The project crashed and burned, I tried to work with the original investors, they weren't interested in ever doing business here again. That one was a failure, we couldn't deliver it to you. I didn't take part, but I tried to help them out. I will be back for more three-minute segments, my time is out. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff, my name is Charles Sagerstrom, I live in the City of Sonora. I'm also the Citizen-at-Large member of the existing Vision Sonora Committee. I'm concerned that this committee has not met for years, despite actions that it could and should have been asked to weigh in upon. With the new Gold Rush Trail design commencing, consultants recognized that adherence to Vision Sonora principles was important. However, they only mentioned discussing this with staff and not the existing Vision Sonora Committee. The committee should not just define the vision, it should steer the implementation in the direction of the plan. Additionally, the fate of the parking lot that hosts the farmer's market and is integral to Vision Sonora and its elements is now the subject of a proposed expensive study that would lose all the parking and its availability for the market. The Vision Sonora Committee has not been consulted. It should be. According to those who have directly inspected the area, the structure above Sonora Creek would not make sense for such a small amount of storage capacity. Solid granite exists 12 feet down, so the capacity would be small. Embarking on an expensive study, regardless of the taxpayer source, is a waste of money. I've personally witnessed the flooding on Green and Church Streets. A 500-year storm, as we have seen, in that case, all bets would be off, there's simply too much water. Under normal storms, I have personally taken it up, as I've heard from other cities that have volunteers doing the same thing, I've taken up the mitigation of ponding by clearing storm drains. And these storm drains on Washington and Green Street and around the new ones at the corner of Stockton and Washington clog very quickly. It only takes a few leaves or a little bit of garbage to keep them from working. I've personally been able to take four inches of water and clear the storm drain and have it drain into a gigantic Gold Rush era drainage system below that immediately facilitated the reduction of that pond. So I think we should pay more attention to the simple solutions before we embark on something so complicated.
Hi, David Morgan, live in Sonora. Just wanna say thank you for the, the police department did a great job at the King's, No King trailer the other day, everything went very smoothly, did a fantastic job, very happy. One thing I would just like to point out is, maybe next time, the night before, put up some no parking signs in front of Courthouse Square and perhaps get some temporary barriers along the front there so people are not going into the street, but in general, the police did a fantastic job.
Thad Waterbury, I live in downtown Sonora, and two concerns. One is, I want to weigh in on the presentation that Barbara just gave about applying for a grant that would potentially take out the parking lot where the farmer's market is and turn that into a catch basin for stormwater. It would eliminate so many parking places, and the farmer's market is one of the two really great things that Sonora does besides the second Saturday night. It's a function that brings everybody together in a really peaceful, friendly state of mind, so please don't do anything that would jeopardize the farmer's market. I can't imagine any place that it could be relocated and still maintain the character of being the market in downtown Sonora. The other thing that I wanted to comment on was, I see on the agenda that there's a proposal to eliminate four of the committees that feed into the city council, and I think that's very short-sighted in that you're cutting off, that would cut off an avenue for the public to come and talk to, get their concerns to the city council. As I understand it now, any concerns would have to go through the city administrator or one of the city staff, and then they would be the gatekeeper whether that concern would come forward to the city council. And once it does get onto the agenda, the public only has three minutes to make a statement to that. There's no dialogue or conversation or asking questions like, what can we do instead or whatever. So I would propose keeping those four committees, even though they may not meet very frequently, it's still an avenue for the public to voice their concerns on certain issues that might be coming up.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move on to presentations. Receive an update from the President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, Katie Dunn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. I'm Katie Dunn, I'm the President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I want to start by talking about the buzz of downtown Sonora. I don't know if you guys, it was a beautiful day, but there was so much going on. We have a new business downtown, well, it's a business that just moved to downtown, relocated, the Goodness Cafe just opened their doors today. They were located towards the, yeah, that way, that way, and so now they are in the old Heart Rock Cafe location. Yes, it is, you have to go in there, it is absolutely beautiful what they've done. They have an outdoor space that has a water feature, there's a sluice box for the kids to gold pan and everything, they've done just an amazing job. They even have a little meeting space next door, so they just opened today, so that was major. And then I just found out today that the Big Wood Brew Works is having a ribbon cutting on Friday, and their official grand opening is this Saturday, which is Trick or Treat Street, so that should be interesting. And then lastly, the lights were installed on the Red Church and Courthouse Park today. So...
I thought, okay, I drove by, is that what was going on, the construction, little traffic stuff? Okay.
Yep, that was them. It was Tim Sindelar, so Sindelar Tree Service and Miners Trees Service that installed the lights with their contraption that looks like a big bug, like a spider. Yeah, so that was pretty exciting, so there was like a lot going on downtown.
I had a lot of fun, but I really don't mind not being 40 feet off the ground on a ladder anymore, so thank you for hiring that job out, not hiring me this time, yeah, thank you.
You're so welcome. And next, I want to give you an update on our so beautiful pilot project for downtown. As you know, this was aimed at tackling one of downtown's most visible challenges, which is vacant storefronts through local public art. Our committee partners are Visit Tuolumne County, who actually funded this project, Tuolumne County Arts, the City of Sonora with Tyler Somerset, the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and Visibly Clean Window Cleaning. I just want to give a shout out to Visibly Clean because these guys came in and they cleaned windows, and they are doing it, you know, at no charge, and they're coming in and cleaning all the windows inside and out, so they are a huge asset to this project. We currently have an art selection committee, and right now, the members are Lisa Mayo at Visit Tuolumne County, Kristy Conforti from Blue Zones Project of Tuolumne County, she's also a member of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce Board, Andy Merrill from our city council, and a couple other ones that we are working on. Let's see, we've, last week, we did two installments, one at Superior Court, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a really, a really beautiful piece that Eleanor Bonbon Brennan, who's here tonight, designed and installed. And then there's another one that is located in El Arroyo upstairs in the window there. So we're still fine-tuning those with some call-to-artists signage on the front there. We have also hired someone to manage Smarter Entry, which is a software program to receive submissions from artists. What's really cool about this software program is that it positions us to be able to work on other similar projects in the future, to engage with local artists and get submissions from them, so we're all kind of set up for the future there. So far, we have 14 submissions, and our, yeah, pretty cool, huh? And our administrator for this project is Eleanor Bonbon Brennan. Bonbon, do you want to come up and say anything?
Thanks for doing this, I'm a little bit nervous, I just got done tattooing and I ran down the street. I am ecstatic that we're receiving submissions now, the portal's open, if you know any artists, we are, there's no all media welcome, there's no stipulations on type or theme this go-around, so I really welcome everyone to submit their art. They get to submit two options, and then also there's a payment for the licensing, so it's a $250 payment for the licensing of this image. So anytime we can back artists and get them on the streets and get the art to be public and also just temporary, kind of movable and mobile, right? And it's a way for us to clean the windows and kind of bring local voices out. I think that art is so important, and local art is even more impactful, so, thank you, thanks for doing this, I appreciate it.
So our next steps are to identify and contact the building owners of the empty buildings and be able to gain access, and then obviously bring in Visibly Clean Window Washers to come in and clean the windows inside and out, and then our selection kitty, committee kitty, our selection committee to decide which artwork and where they want to place it, so that's our next steps. As you know, Trick or Treat Street is this Saturday, so we're super excited about that. I have been watching the weather like a hawk, because I'm like, oh, please do not rain, please do not, but I, I think we're gonna be okay, I think it's just gonna be cloudy. Let's just, you know, put that to the universe here.
If they're dressed like frogs, they'll be okay.
Yes, yes.
Cloudy's extra spooky, right? That's cloudy's okay.
Well, that's what I was thinking as well, I think it'll add a creepy factor to it, so, yeah, that's good. So it's from 4:00 to 5:30 with Spooky Town Park, we are featuring a face painter, some kids' games, spooky music, we'll have a graveyard scene, we have a creepy carrot story walk with the Blue Zones Project to Tuolumne County around the perimeter of the park, Cal Waste is gonna have a table there, I suggested that they should have Oscar the Grouch be They're working on it. The Sonora Emblem Club and Watch Resources will also have a table there, so that's Trick or Treat Street. And then our mixer is tomorrow night, it's a McHalloween mixer at McDonald's. So come and meet the new owners of McDonald's, it's the location next to Safeway, and it'll be a Halloween-themed mixer, and they, the parking is limited, so they did recommend carpooling if you can, so that's all I have in my report, unless you have any questions for me.
I'm sorry, you didn't mention the time of the mixer.
Oh, 5:30 to 7:00.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Exciting stuff, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Christmas is coming. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or members of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately.
And I would like to consider item G3 separately, please.
Make that two of us.
Removing item G from the consent calendar. Any of the other items?
Did we ask for public comment?
I know, but I was, I thought maybe there was another item, no, all right. Would there be any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will ask for a motion to approve items A through F.
So moved.
Let me see, I think that, no, there's H and I, sorry.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented, with the exception of item G, which we'll consider in a moment.
I'll say again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I just wanted to, item E, I wanted to salute Steve Okay. And I just wanted to, item E, I wanted to salute Stephen and Andy for their proclamation condemning violence.
It's really, the bulk of it is Stephen's. I got to give credit where credit is due.
Well, today I sat in on a, on a roundtable about, about, and I did not know this, but this is United Against Hate Week. And, and cities, cities around the state have all, you know, some, some have had actual events. Many are doing resolutions. And I was, you know, happy to be able to say that, you know, two council members had collaborated on, on a resolution, and that we were, it was on the consent calendar tonight. It's, it's something that I think we all need to reflect on and, you know, work on, on a commonality versus a division, and certainly on civility with one another. And I thought, you did an excellent job. It was well worded and, 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 you know, very empathetic, and hopefully a lesson for us all, you know, a model to follow. So, thank you. And on that, we will go back to consider the recommendation to formally dissolve for city commissions committees. Would you like to speak to that?
So, I asked to pull item three of the four under G, which is recommendations to formally dissolve for commissions, because I support maintaining the Traffic and Parking Commission. But I think I know where it's going. That's okay. I just want to formalize it and raise my voice for something I support.
Yeah, I really only, my, my only comments were regarding the fact that, you know, I've heard a lot of public comment, both, you know, this evening, previous council meetings, and just in the time that it's been able to circulate and people have been able to talk about this. And again, I want to stress, you know, this is a, an efficiency first move. It's not like we want to completely forget about all these different, you know, concepts and ideas in the city. And having said that, I, it would be my request to city staff that the, the committees that we do have, for example, Vision Sonora, do need to meet, you know. I, I think that's been one of the biggest eye opening things for me is, you know, we do have all these committees. And if we're, if we're saying we want to streamline the bureaucracy, so to speak, of having so many different committees, I think we owe it to the public that those committees that do still exist, that in good faith, we have those meetings. And I think I've heard Vision Sonora has been the big one. We haven't met in, in two years. You know, I've, I've heard a ton of complaints about, you know, whether it's the, the bus stop with, you know, lights that don't match our aesthetic, or, you know, tearing up a parking lot to, you know, do a creek rehabilitation project. I think those are all things, you know, the things that we're essentially getting rid of here that could fall under Vision Sonora. And it would be my request that we, we kind of make that or whatever avenue a bit more of a avenue to get that public engagement and to talk about these issues, just so they're not completely, you know, left on the side of the road, so to speak.
Vice Mayor Merrill, I would, I would contend that instead of staff, we should be the ones leading on that perhaps.
That's, that's fine.
Because staff is overwhelmed, and I, I agree that
It still takes staff to hold the meetings, though. You know, that's not something that we can just do by ourselves, so.
We all have, when Mr. Waterbury was speaking, I would have liked to have been able to remind him and everyone that they have five members that they can contact pretty much very easily. And almost all of us, I think, are very accessible. So, but as far as the Vision Sonora, yeah, we should be probably taking the lead on that, not expecting staff who is just working about, or worrying, dealing with just the gears of governance and keeping things functioning.
But I, the reason I bring it up again is, you know, I'm hearing a lot, you know, from people that are both here this evening and just in, in my time, that, you know, I, I'm constantly trying to push back on the lack of transparency or not enough public outreach. So I just really want to take as public of a stand as I can. I want to have those conversations. And, you know, I believe Mr. Sagerstrom could verify, you know, like, I, I listen, I, I take notes. I'd be happy to show every single person that comes up and speaks during public comment, I, I write everything down, you know. And this has been three plus years running now. And it's not something I'm going to stop doing. And I, I do, you know, I can remember being like 10, 13 years old, and I feel Vision Sonora has been one of those things that's really fallen by the wayside. You know, I can remember things like bulb outs, remember things like, you know, just general beautification efforts that could have been over the last 25 years and haven't. So, again, you know, if we're getting rid of things like parks recreation beautification, getting rid of things like traffic commission, you know, cemeteries and stuff, then we need to still have an avenue for some of those things to be addressed. And I don't think it's that big of an ask, you know, if, if we're not also including Vision Sonora in that to finally kind of give that committee the, the respect it deserves, and, and let the citizens kind of guide some of our design choices going forward.
So I think that this is an easy solution, because I agree with you both. So I just want to remind everyone that the plan for the grants that we're moving forward with actually came straight out of Vision Sonora as a recommendation for the parking lot. So we could go back to that recommendation. We are staff continuing to move forward with the recommendations that came out of that plan every day. So the purpose of that grant is not to build a project. The purpose of that grant is to analyze the potential to engage the community and to do the planning necessary to then either decide if we have a project or alternatives for a project. So it is very much meant to be community inclusive. It is not construction. It is plan based. And Vision Sonora is our guidance staff for that recommendation and that project specifically. So I think as we move forward as your staff, with every project we're pulling out of the Vision Sonora Plan, extensive community engagement is a critical piece. Diversity of that engagement and participation is really important. I think bringing stakeholders that aren't typically involved in community processes, like our youth, is very important to us as staff, to get their perspective on long-term investments. And I love Councilman Plummer's recommendation that council members participate in the guidance of those committees, because I think that's great, too. So happy to do it all. And I think you've got internal advocates as your staff for Vision Sonora, and us wanting to see it successful, absolutely. And we'll continue to work towards that.
Has it been two years since that committee has met? Because that's kind of
That committee has met multiple times since I was here.
I've, I've never been on the committee, so.
They were, they were the guiding force on the Clean California Grant and the implementation of the Bridge Silhouettes, which was also a concept that was born through Vision Sonora. And then they did not weigh in on the Columbia Gateway. That was handled through, I think, the Columbia Historic Society was the body that Caltrans worked through on that. But Caltrans absolutely worked through Vision Sonora and implementation of those projects.
Didn't Vision Sonora also have input on the, on going forward with Leinaburg in the last year?
They, I believe they did.
Who is on that committee?
But I
I just, I would love to hear from the, the members that are on the Vision Sonora committee.
I am on the committee. Sharon Merivich is on the committee. Charles is on the committee. A lot of the people that are on, that were formerly on the committee have left. Lori Lehman is gone. I mean, I, I would have to go back and look. I know Sarah Nesper no longer lives in the city. And then there was an argument about if you had to live in the city, you know, to be
Sounds like we might need to refresh our membership.
So we, so, you know, and I will also leave it up to you to recruit.
Oh, hey, you know, I just need to know when the meetings are and if we're actually going to have them. And I can make it happen, so.
From my understanding as staff, it's not a standing committee. It's project by project based committee. And then
That's kind of surprising, because like Vision Sonora is kind of like a conceptual thing. It's not like an individual project based thing, so.
Well, as we pull projects for implementation. So as we start to move, because otherwise the plan's done, the plan's been approved. But as we move forward, and I think the other component is, as we move forward, the expectation is extensive broad community outreach. And so it wouldn't be that Vision Sonora is the authority, absolutely not, because part of the requirements for this funding is to demonstrate the diversity of that public engagement process. So I just want to remind everybody that Vision Sonora is great as a concept. You don't have implementation or construction until you start to develop the projects, and you start to go through the phases of those projects, and also the alternatives of those projects. And then Andy, I'm sure you know, TCTC along with Caltrans, I mean, we are working every day to guide those shop projects. As I know you are the representative at TCTC, making sure that we are guiding the development of those shop projects with Vision Sonora in mind. And so I think that we're constantly making sure that that fingerprint is replicated through everything that we're building within the community. And I do understand your point about those streetlights. Fortunately, all of those plans were done much before there was construction time to stop it.
I remember that was like one of the first things I voted on when I got inaugurated. So I, I know that, I understand, you know, I'm not trying to, to point blame around, but I, I do think, you know, there's a general consensus that this is a committee that has been mothballed for a little too long, and I think we need to freshen it up, or, you know.
But I do understand, though, I, I don't want people to think that their voices aren't being heard, because that concern, that specific example, I know that you guys have allocated funding for us to paint them black, kind of remedy the situation the best we can. We have that. We're waiting to get on Call Consultants so that we can be able to do that work. But I think the other thing is, the reminder of that mistake, because we do recognize the value of what our streetlights should be in the city of Sonora. We're moving forward with that active transportation project, making sure that every improvement moving forward embraces that concept. So even though people come, they express their views, they think that we're not listening, or that we're not being inclusive, we hear them, and we do everything we can to advocate as projects move forward, as you do, Andy, to make sure that that vision gets incorporated as those concepts were designed. But I think, as your staff, we're really excited to get out there and start having bigger conversations, you know, get out of the committee structure, get into the community, meet people in those locations, start engaging a youth demographic, start engaging people that might not typically participate in a community driven process to get ideas and input. It's okay to take those back to Vision Sonora, but I don't think that those ideas should be void of this room and this arena as well.
No, and I'm not ceding any authority. I just, you know, the, the main point I'm trying to make is, you know, I've heard we want more public input. The public themselves is asking for it. I'd like to at least meet them halfway, at the very least.
And I think Mark pointed out that, you know, our outreach could be louder, broader, and, and more explicit, so people do understand that something is happening. And that, you know, I mean, we are also somewhat limited by our capital improvement budgets and things that we can do within, within our capabilities, our financial capabilities. So
So with your direction, fingers crossed we get the grant, because it will fund exactly what you just asked for.
Vice Mayor Merrill, if I'm hearing correctly, because it kind of aligns, and maybe I'm hearing this because it aligns with some of my ideas, you would like to see Vision Sonora revisit some of the overarching long-term goals and not just work on things that were put into project status or desired outcomes 10, 15 years ago.
Yeah, you know, and the reason I say that is, again, you know, I, again, I, it's embarrassing to say, but, you know, there's a lot of projects that I remember when I was in grade school, that, you know, we're still kind of now finally maybe sort of talking about finding funding for, you know, and it's just, and I, I, you know, having been here for over three years now, I understand how this works, and that nothing happens overnight. But what I will say is 25 years, I, as someone who's lived here a long time, would have expected a little bit more. I mean, I remember Vision Sonora kind of was conceived around the year 2000, and I would have been nine, 10 years old. I'm 36 now. So I just
I don't remember it being that long, but
It, it, it has been that long. I, I remember it clearly.
So actually, I, I wrote the grant for Vision Sonora through Caltrans. So, let's see, I was with the Transportation Commission. My son was two, maybe three. He's 19.
But point stands, we're talking, give or take 20 years ago, you know, it's
Yeah, but we, you know, I also, you know, have gone through several administrations, and we've gone through financial hardship. And, you know, we're, we're still standing, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the momentum's not there. So I'm glad you're going to undertake that, and all power to you.
So with that, I'll move, I suppose, oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Public comment on item G.
Yes. And any other council comment?
I was just going to say that I looked back at the la, I think this is the most recent committee and commissions list, and it says that Suzanne Cruz and I were supposed to be on Vision Sonora. And it has not met since I've been on council. And so
Yeah, so Mark took Suzanne's place on that committee.
Yeah. Okay, you were the alternative, or alternate.
I, I think that there, I think that there's just two positions for
Yeah, I can't remember, I can't remember the size of the committee. You know, I can't remember. There was, it seemed to me, five or seven people.
So I think we can bring all of this back, because council had given us direction to create this idea of an arts committee. And so I think that we can bring back this conversation. We can talk about which department and which staff level could support it, because I think my recommendation would be community development at this point in time. And so I think we can bring back a future item that talks about how we incorporate more of the community into participation of that committee, and how we incorporate this idea of that arts group with Vision Sonora and its implementation. So we're happy to bring back that conversation.
And I have no preference of what the committee's called, or what the actual bureaucratic, you know, mechanism is. I just don't want these ideas to die on the vine, and I don't want to deny the public an opportunity to weigh on, on critical design elements of how our city evolves for the future, so.
I did have one other quick question. For the, for committees that we are discussing, how, how often are members changed, or is there any limit on how long someone serves, or anything like that?
I think it's every two years.
I thought they were four years, but, or I'm not, it might vary by committee, yeah.
It depends on longevity on the council as well.
No, I mean, um
Oh, you mean for the public, remember?
Yeah. So like, you know, take the parking and traffic. Is there any
That was like 10, I mean, there were a lot of people on that. There was the police, there was the fire.
No, I mean, how long can someone serve on one of these committees?
So I think from my experience with public participation in committees, staff participation, we're all paid to be there, right? So we, we show up to the committee meeting. So I think what I've seen is it's been difficult to recruit. And what I have seen with committees is it's typically the same people that have been participating for the 10 or 12 years that we've been talking about some of these projects.
So it's kind of just a lifetime appointment if someone wants to keep doing it?
It's
Well, no, I'm just curious.
No, 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 I know you're serious.
That's quite correct.
Sadly, it's true.
Okay. I was just curious. I mean, because I'm new, and I
Yeah, no, it's very difficult to recruit. I mean, I talk to people all the time, you know, about even running for city council, and, and try and get people excited. But there's, there's a reluctance to even commit to two years.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, four years seems like an eternity, I guess, but
And, and I remember when Matt Hawkins convinced me to run, or to join the Planning Commission, and it was like, oh, gosh.
They turned me away my first time.
Four years.
It's a, it's a big commitment.
It's a bit of a
It's a big commitment, yeah.
And I would defer to our city clerk, because I know that she helps facilitate the appointments to these committees. So Tracy, if you have any information that's relevant to that question, please jump in.
Several of our committees have, like Planning Commission members as well, so those turn over along with the Planning Commission. But most of the, yeah, the public appointments have been ongoing, until they decide they don't want to do it.
Till you leave or die.
Yeah. And it's really the Parking and Traffic Commission and the Vision Sonora ones have really been the ones meeting more than the other ones.
And it's just very difficult to get the younger generation, you know, X, Y, Z, to
Hey, we're doing our job.
Yeah. But I know, you know, and you guys, it's, you have, you have
No, but hey, we're here.
Yeah, you have many balls in the air, and I understand that. But it also is the, the impact. I want, you know, you want, you want younger that, that input from your generation, because you're the people that are going to be living with these decisions, not me. Well, maybe for another 10 years, I hope, but anyway. You know, these are the kinds of things where we do need really by a section, by sections of all, all of our, you know, demographic.
We're actually pretty well represented right now.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was really interesting, though, that the average age in Sonora had actually declined had actually declined from the 40s to the 38s or something, you know, which was, which was hopeful. Yeah, so, you know, it's 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 just getting a more diverse vision into some of these committees that that I would hope for, but.
So now do we need public comment?
No, public comment, sorry.
See, I got it this time.
Okay. Anyone out in the audience care to expand on our conversation?
Good evening, my name is Sheriff Mary Rich, and I'm representing the Twomey Heritage Committee. The Twomey Heritage Committee supports retention of the Parks Recreation and Beautification Committee. Its accomplishments speak for itself, and the general plan calls the committee, quote, "necessary to provide community input and the technical expertise essential to the retention of the city's scenic character." This committee does not need streamlining, and it is not unnecessary bureaucracy, as your staff report indicates. Statistics presented to you indicate that the committee hasn't met very often, and I think there's really two reasons for that. One, the committee meets as needed to approve plans for certain developments. This explanation speaks more to the level of development activity in the city than in any problem with the committee. Secondly, projects within the jurisdiction of the committee have not been referred to the committee, such as the new field at Rotary Park, work on the Dragoon Cult Trail, and other removal of trees in front of the parking garage. The same is true of the Vision Sonora Committee, which hasn't met for over two years, yet a plan to demolish the farmer's market parking lot for a half-square-block-sized drainage basin is in direct conflict with the Vision Sonora Plaza and gathering place there. The value of community involvement in most city projects far outweighs any perceived bureaucratic hurdles or the need to whiz through projects for the sake of speed. If the committee needs tweaking, then let's have a meeting to discuss how we can be of more value to Sonora's residents and and visitors. Just, we don't need to use the template that they use in Washington, D.C. People don't like something, it's bye-bye, and the program is gone. Please don't do that, thank you.
I hate this, I'm not good at it. But just going back to letting the public know what's going on, you know, I go onto the city website every now and again. There's very, very limited information on that website. There's nothing about what's coming up, what you're thinking about. Just about three or four days before the city commission meeting, you get an agenda writing. But like, this whole thing that we just talked about, the proposal to to put a retention basin on, that's nowhere on your website. Very easy to put stuff on your website way before it becomes necessary to vote on it. So, thanks. But it, I mean, you also talk about having young people committed, they they do a lot of stuff electronically. So get it out there, get the information.
Hello again. As the citizens, a large member of the Vision Sonora Committee, I get the meeting announcements, and so to make sure the record is straight, you know, thanks to Tracy, you know, the last meeting announcement was for July 11th, 2023, to discuss the Blue Zones Charette Process for Leinbergh, which I think was an appropriate reason to convene the meeting, and it was a good meeting. Also, the Vision Sonora Committee was very directly involved with the Caltrans development of the Overpass Art, which I think has been implemented in a fantastic way, and we should all be proud of that. I also think that if you're looking at committee efficiency, maybe a way to reboot the Vision Sonora Committee is to combine in some of the work of the committees that are being set aside to gain more community input, not less, to rally around our Vision Sonora, update it, refresh it, and get, you know, more implementation input. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will return this issue to the council.
If there's no further discussion, I'll move to approve item G as presented.
This is where I'd ask to separate out item three of G.
So I'll move to approve item G numbers one, two, and four as presented.
Just, nothing against Mark, but I would just assume approve the whole thing, because I think that things like the traffic, parking and traffic and all that can not necessar, I don't know if Vision Sonora can handle that kind of a load if we were to kind of move some, shuffle some things around, but I think the whole purpose of this is to basically eliminate the committees so that we can, I don't want to use the word streamline, but it's been the the common theme.
Simplify?
Simplify, there we go, the process. And so I would, in my humble opinion, I would like to just move forward with just eliminating all four committees and then bringing it back in front of us as to what we can do with Vision Sonora or the other committees to basically, you know, encapsulate the other work of the other four committees that are, you know, are dissolving.
So we have two competing motions?
Yep, yep, so and that reason I wanted to bring this.
So you have seconded Andy's motion?
Well, Andy didn't.
So, so, going with my original motion, I'm just gonna move to approve item G as presented.
Okay, I'll second Andy's motion.
Sorry, Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, one, and we move forward. And you guys have your marching orders for Vision Sonora. All right, public hearings. Waive the first reading, read by title only, and introduce an ordinance of the Sonora City Council clarifying ordinance number 905, repealing chapter 8.30, Emergency Services, and repealing and replacing chapter 2.28, Emergency Services in perennas reserved of the Sonora Municipal Code. Douglas White or someone from White Brenner?
Christina is here.
Christina, there she is, Christina, could you please help us with this?
Yes, good evening, council. At the last city council meeting, this council approved ordinance number 905. Our, or the city's consultant who publishes ordinances that have been passed by the council reached out and pointed to some information that was missing from that ordinance, and they needed clarification on some items in order to codify it. And so tonight, what we have before you is ordinance 906, which provides that clarification in order to codify ordinance number 905. Specifically, the original ordinance didn't make clear that chapter 8.30 was being repealed. And so that that is what this new ordinance does, is it just fixes that issue.
It repeals.
Chapter 8.30, Emergency Services, and repeals and replaces chapter 2.28.
And then replaces it with a more complete reading.
Correct.
Yeah. Questions for our attorney?
Not really.
It was, you know, it was pretty complicated the first time I looked through it and tried to figure out what was happening, but, you know, you made, they made a whole new portion to add into the into the emergency plan. So it seemed to be much more thorough and and comprehensive. So any other comments? If not, may I have a motion?
Public comment?
Oh, sorry, that's right. Public, I have any public comment about the ordinance and its repeal and its replacement for emergency services? It is pretty complicated and lengthy, but I'm sure it covers all the bases that we need in in establishing a hierarchy of who does what in an emergency.
If there's no public comment, I'll move to approve, what is it, item A?
Yes, waive the first reading.
As presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now here comes the heavy lift. Consider adoption of resolution number 10-20-2025-C, amending the city's general plan to approve the 2024-2029 housing element, including the adoption of an initial study slash negative declaration in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Tyler Somerset. Walk us through this hefty thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll get us started here, and then we'll have a presentation from Lance, who is part of our CSG consultant team. We also have two members of the Michael Baker team that also worked on this. And then we can get into questions and and discussion following that. But just to kick us off, I guess, you know, this is one of eight mandatory elements that are in the general plan. The housing element gets updated roughly every five years or so. We are actually now one year beyond when we were supposed to deliver that, and that is, will become part of the discussion here in a little bit. But it does, as we are out of certification of the housing element, it does threaten some of our funding sources out there, such as community development block grant funding, which, of course, we want to get for the 290 South Seward Street rehabilitation. But it's 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 a big lift, you know, it's the housing element helps to articulate, you know, where the city's at in in a moment in time and project the the need into the future, and to try to identify some sites that will help us be compliant with not only our own goals and objectives, but some of the ones that the the state encourages us to accomplish as well. Again, this has been a project that we've been working on for a couple of years at least. This is a project I inherited from our previous community development director. We took on the the housing element simultaneously with the safety element, which will be coming here soon, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so we've we've been making a lot of updates, but this is the first one to to make it to the city council for consideration, so we appreciate that. At this point, I guess, because it is a big document, there's a lot there. I will ask Lance from our CSG team just to run us through kind of a PowerPoint, giving us a summary of the document, what's in there, what's changed in the 2024 to 2029 plan, and and, you know, what we're forecasting here into the future, what some of our state requirements are, and our strategy to try and accomplish those. So with that, Lance, we'll make you a host here, so you'll be able to add the presentation or share it, and then everyone will be able to see that, and we can run through your presentation before we come back to the council.
Tyler, you want me to queue it up, is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, even printed front and back, it comes back as a as a hefty document, so glad you guys got a little work out of it.
Yeah, yeah, that, and that, even the slides were.
Can can everybody see that, and can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you, but we can't, we don't have the slides up yet.
Okay, it's on, it's on mine, you see here. There we go.
There you go. Perfect, we can, we're tracking with you now, Lance, thank you.
Great, great. Good evening, mayor, council, Lance Low, CSG consultants. Before you tonight is a public hearing to consider the 2024-2029 housing element update to the city's general plan. As Tyler noted, the housing element is one of eight required elements of the general plan. Since 1969, California law requires all local governments to include a housing element in their general plans. The purpose of the housing element is to ensure cities and counties plan to meet the housing needs of current and future residents, including low-income and special needs populations. Unlike the other elements of the general plan, which are more long-range, considering the housing market is so fluid, the housing element is required to be updated every five years. Also, unlike the other elements of the general plan, the State Department of California Housing and Human Development, HCD, is required to review and certify that the plan is in accordance with state law. Now, historically, that didn't mean a lot, certification from HCD, but in recent times, that there's some fiscal implications to that, as Tyler noted. As an example, if you're applying for CBG funds, state CBG funds, the first question of the application is, do you have a certified element? So there's certainly, now, there's there's more teeth in the law, and there's some fiscal implications if you don't have a certified housing element. Overall, a housing element in California is fundamentally an exercise in analyzing housing capacity and constraints, which then informs future planning, policy, and programmatic action. So in essence, the housing element is really threefold. One, do you have adequate residential densities to accommodate various economic populations of your community and that growth of the community? Do you have adequate capacity, infrastructure capacity to serve that resident development? And have you removed governmental and other constraints to extent feasible, such as fees and and bureaucratic governmental processes? So that's, in essence, what the law requires. The table of contents of your housing are, you know, one through six, 3.1 through 3.6. 3.1 includes an introduction, which includes the background, and it also includes housing element law, which is found in Article 10.6, 10.7 of the government code. Section 3.2, Housing Needs Assessment, includes demographics, community makeup, housing stock, and basic housing demographics of the community. 3.3, Site Inventory Analysis and Zoning, which is, allows the city's land inventory to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. So the RENA, which you may or may not have heard of, and I'll speak to that in a little bit, but that's basically the projected growth for your community during the five-year planning period. Three, section 3.4, chapter 3.4, deals with constraints, both government and non-governmental constraints, which will be identified and mitigated. Section 3.5 is firmly, firmly, and fair housing. Now, that's a new section of the housing element, and that provides analysis of disparities in housing, which, in the case of the city, there are none. And the heart of the plan is chapter 3.6. That's the housing plan, which includes the goals, policy programs, and quantified objectives. Now, the majority of the goals, policies, and programs are carryovers from prior housing element. There are, you'll note, some newer policies to update the zoning code. Namely, there's a number of sections of the zoning code that doesn't comply with state law. You'll also note that, in addition to adoption of the housing element, the state wants a a a region. the state wants a, a, a regional housing needs overlay for what's known as the Lemke property. And I, and we'll discuss that a little bit further. That, however, is not in action tonight, except it is included in section three point one of the goals. By way of demographics and needs assessments, the city's population remains stable around five thousand people, median age decreased from forty-three to about thirty-eight from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-one. Increase in children under eighteen and seniors over sixty-five was an increase. And we have a higher rent occupancy in Sonora, fifty-one percent versus a county, which is at twenty-three percent. Some housing stock and affordability findings, seventy-seven percent of the housing units are over thirty years old. Fifty-one percent of the units are over fifty years old. That, you know, that's not uncommon. It's very similar to where I live in the, the Grass Valley, Nevada city area, and is common with a gold rush town. Average home price is about three hundred and fifty thousand. Average rent for a one-bedroom is about fifteen hundred and goes up to about almost three thousand at twenty-seven hundred for a four-bedroom home. Now, the regional housing need allocation, this has been a challenge for many cities and counties throughout the, the state. RENA numbers are coming in that are very difficult to accommodate. So what is the RENA? The regional, the regional housing needs assessment is a process required by California law to ensure cities and counties plan for their fair share of housing to meet the needs of all income levels. So how is the RENA determined? The RENA is determined by HCD largely through, you know, Department of Finance calculations or, or projections. And it requires basically housing units for various segments over the planning period. And it calls out specifically allocations of those units per economic segment. And again, it distributes housing need to council governments, counties, and cities, which in turn incorporate the, the RENA numbers into their housing element update. City of Sonora Regional Housing Needs allocations. The city is required during the planning period, the five-year planning period, to essentially approve, have, you know, two units. You know, this is, in, in my experience, I've been a, a, a small town planner for upwards of thirty years, and this is really unheard of. To give you a little context, I updated the city of Grass Valley housing element some years ago when I worked there. And albeit the town is about double the size of your town, but our RENA number was about seven hundred and fifty. So that gives you a little context of a real similar city. You have two units during the planning period, one for very low and one low. So essentially, you know, if someone builds an ADU or a junior ADU, you have in turn met your RENA obligation. And, and that is confirmed every year through your annual progress report that's due in April. So your RENA numbers are really manageable, and I congratulate you on, on, on those numbers. As far as the capacity to meet the RENA requirement, both the Lemke and the Cuesta Heights, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, have also been incorporated into to show adequate land. Those aren't necessary, but with those properties, you have a whole total of one hundred and fifty-four units or one hundred and fifty-two units surplus during the planning period. Again, the sites identified were the Lemke at a hundred and six units and the Cuesta Heights at forty-eight units. Lemke Properties in the R three zone, it's about eleven acres. Maximum density in R three zone is twenty-one point seven five. And you'll note that doesn't compute to the hundred and six units projected. However, given topography and past densities, they applied more of a realistic density count. And so it came up with a unit potential of a hundred and six units, and that would be low and very low income units. And then just given the R three and HDR general plan and zoning nomenclature. Also, the Cuesta Heights is in the R one zone. It's about twenty-one acres. At seven point two dwelling units per acre yields about forty-eight units, and that would serve moderate and above moderate populations. So you have more than enough units to, to make up your, your RENA numbers. Here are the sites, both Cuesta Heights and Lemke Properties. Section three point four deals with constraints to housing, government constraints, or there's basically three constraints identified. Government constraints, non-governmental constraints, and environmental constraints. Governmental constraints include zoning fees, permit processes, perhaps bureaucratic processes that we're trying to eliminate. Non-governmental constraints include land and construction costs. Environmental includes obviously wildfire risk and, and aging infrastructure that you're, you're continuing with. Again, three point five, affirmatively furthering fair housing. It's a new section required of the housing element. And the findings of that reveal that there's no racially, ethnically concentrated areas of poverty in the city. And also, the AFFH analysis shows equitable RENA site distribution citywide. So there's not a concentration of low-income persons, ethnic persons within the city. Section three point six again is the heart of the plan, which includes the policy goals and objectives. Some of the goals are housing conservation, housing production, provision of adequate housing sites, future annexation for future housing cycles, removal of government constraints, regional coordination, and equal housing opportunity. And with those goals, they have programs and objectives to, to quantify the end result of, of, of those programs or those goals. Again, as defined, you have goals, policies, and housing programs defined. The quantified objectives for the five-year planning period include two, a minimum of two new units, twenty rehab units, and two hundred and sixty preserved residential units. As noted earlier, this document needs to be submitted, ultimately submitted to HCD. And, and you'll note in attachment three, their June ninth, twenty twenty-five letter. Basically, they've indicated that there's, it's twofold. One, that you've met the statutory requirements of housing element law. And two, we need to do a rezone, or you need to do, the city needs to do a rezone in accordance with program three point one, which requires rezoning of the Lemke property by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And yes, we're behind in that date. And that rezoning is essentially would allow a by right review process where development, at least twenty percent of the units are affordable to lower income households. So typically a rezone, you think of changing uses, you changing standards, changing, you know, other standards within the zone. This simply memorializes, should a developer propose twenty percent affordable housing on the site, they are afforded a by right process. It's simply, so it's, 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 it's memorializes, it's full disclosure is really what it does, is full disclosure via zoning. The planning commission will be revisiting the overlay zone and provide a recommendation to the city council. And we're going to get to that, hopefully get to the planning commission as soon as possible for that housing, regional housing needs overlay zone and get that back to council, because again, it's due, or it was due by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. CSG Environmental Group prepared an initial study and a negative declaration resulting in a negative declaration. A public notice of intent to adopt the negative declaration and notice of public hearing was prepared and posted pursuant to SEQA guidelines and state law. The negative declaration was circulated through the Office of Planning and Research for a three-day public review period commencing July eleventh, twenty twenty-five through closing bids on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And the initial study and negative declaration is in attachment four of your staff report. We did receive three letters on the project. One letter from Caltrans, which essentially said that they, they applaud the work that the city is doing, and they just would certainly like to have more or have you coordinate, the city that is coordinate with Caltrans on, on future development. We also have more of a form letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we've noted that. And we do have another comment letter from Mr. Lemke with respect to the regional housing needs overlay zone, although it's not necessarily related to the environmental document itself. It's really more the, you know, you know, you know, it's related more towards the ability to develop this property like he would want to. The planning commission considered the, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-nine housing element at its August twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting. After receiving public comment, the planning commission unanimously recommended the city council adopt the final draft twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine City of Sonora housing element as presented. The outgrowth of that, the recommendations tonight would be a letter to HCD indicating that you have adopted it and the rezone in accordance with the June ninth letter is forthcoming. So with that, the planning commission recommends that the city council take the following actions. Adopt resolution number ten, twenty, twenty twenty-five C. Amending the city's general plan, adopting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine housing element, which includes the following actions. Adoption of the initial study and negative declaration is appropriately leveled environmental review in accordance with the California California Environmental Quality Act and guidelines. Adoption of finds of fact for approval of the housing element as presented and approval of the twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, four, twenty twenty-nine housing element as presented in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. Staffs available for any questions and or comments. Thank you so much.
Comments from or questions from the council?
Go ahead. No, it, it's just a quick thing. I was looking at just for the public's interest, there's a lot of really interesting overlay maps of the city that kind of show things like, you know, economic scores or, you know, opportunity areas and stuff like that. But there was one in particular that really caught my attention. And if I can find the exact, there's a lot of them. It's on page, it's three dash one, one, three of the, the housing draft element, but it's page three hundred and three of the agenda, and it's regarding overpayment by renters. This is, I'm sorry, this is page three hundred and four of the agenda packet. It's in the middle of the page, it's three dash one, one, four for the housing element stuff. But if, if I'm interpreting this correctly, back twenty twenty-ten to twenty fourteen, big, I would say over half the city was overpaying by eighty percent or something on rent? And those numbers appear to have gotten better from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, but I just want to make sure I'm interpreting the, the zones and overlays correctly there. If people are still overpaying in rent, that's just an interesting statistic, I think. And to me, it screams, maybe we need some more housing stock and expand and grow a little bit.
That's, that's what I'm.
I mean, that's if you come to a fair market of price, overpayment, I mean.
I'm just asking, am I, am I interpreting that correctly?
I don't understand it conceptually, unless you force somebody through government means.
Look, Mark, Mark.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I.
I, I'm not debating the, the facts. I just am asking, am I interpreting the, the graphs here or the, the overlay correctly? So I think what. No, I'm, I'm saying like eighty percent, it says greater than eighty percent over. I'm, I'm just trying to, to better kind of interpret what that actually means, because if it's.
According to whom?
And I think the term overpayment doesn't apply to market rate or what they're paying. It's in terms of percentage to their household income. So then when you look at renters are paying more of their household income toward rent, even though our average rent is only fifteen hundred dollars comparatively, they're paying a higher percentage of their income because most likely they're statistically low income disadvantaged.
Yeah, so that's.
Versus people who own.
So if I were to interpret the, the overlay, the, the picture on the left-hand side, that means that people are paying eighty percent of their income in rent?
So if you look at what the rent was within the community, I think that was part of the PowerPoint presentation. Average is about fifteen hundred. But when statistically more of your community is low income disadvantaged, which I believe City of Sonora is, they're paying a greater percentage of their income towards rent compared to people who own, who may not be as disadvantaged in their homeownership.
Well, apparently overpayment by owners is also a thing. It shows the whole city is orange, which would be forty to sixty percent.
Well, and if I could clarify as well.
I'm just asking, how do I interpret those graphs?
When we talk about affordability, it's affordability is, is gauged by thirty percent of your gross income. So if you're paying, and that's utilities for renters, utilities, everything, thirty percent. And then for owners, mortgage, insurance, and the like. So your total income, gross income, if you're paying more than thirty percent, yeah, that's considered affordable, or you're, affordable is considered up to thirty percent.
So then I would be correct in assuming that people are, are paying eighty percent or greater than eighty percent.
I think it's saying that eighty percent of renters are, are overpaying more than thirty percent. That's my interpretation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That may be forty-five percent or something like that, which is still a huge burden.
Yeah, but the point I'm trying to make is they're still overpaying. And, and no, a, a, all I'm trying to say is, you know, to me, the biggest solution is more housing, you know. Which I'm, I'm trying to massage away and say, hey, the city needs to grow. If we want to make our housing market more affordable, so.
Location, locution of that, we're all in agreement.
Yeah, no, that's why I just wanted clarification, you know, so I could, I, I want to. I'm trying to relate a council sentiment and a push that we have collectively said, we need to do this. And I'm trying to connect it to hard data in our housing element to prove a collective point here.
Absolutely. So, wow. Madam Mayor, I also have a question for staff here, Mr. Lowe. And that was for the Lemke rezone. So it is late. Is that hurting Mr. Lemke or the city or, and are there remedies for it? I imagine Mr. Lemke, who is here, will bring that to our attention when we ask for public comment. But is, can that be cured with just taking it to the planning commission at this late date?
Yes, sir. That is, the answer is yes. There's two requirements, adopt the housing element as is. However, it wouldn't, it cannot be certified by HCD until the rezoning has occurred. So once the rezoning occurs, then yes, and we hope that that will happen timely. And we can get that to HD, notify them of that, that is done, hopefully. And then you will be in compliance or, and your housing will be able to be certified. So that is correct. Yes, sir.
And then he can develop however he wants to develop.
Right.
That's correct.
Is there any liability for this late submission? Are we paying any kind of fine for not getting our housing element in, in order?
No fines. I think we do have a, an open call for community development block grant. That's due in, applications are due in December, so.
We just need to get pushed through to HCD or whatever it's called.
That's correct.
I mean, it was pretty impressive, the amount of paperwork the state requires you to. The hoops that you must jump over. So any other, Steven, Beth?
I, I think my only comment was, was basically, I think Mr. Lemke brought it up beforehand. It is basically the opposing side of C, of Cuesta Oaks instead of where it's Cuesta Heights. Maybe it's, you know, the other side of it, of a Cuesta Oaks. And I know he was saying that they don't even have any plans to develop that because of how much stifling has happened. So I think my only comment would be if we can, anything we can to stop the stifling and make things happen, that's about it.
I'm sorry, what was the word that you said?
Stifling. Basically, the, the lower side between Cuesta Oaks and the Elks subdivision, that's something that twenty years ago, they were planning on doing something with.
Yeah, I remember.
And countless investors and people have been through it, and I don't know the whole story to it, just kind of what I've learned at my short time with.
Mr. Popovic, yeah, that came in, yeah, I mean, they were very, it was going to be quite the glorious development.
Yeah, yeah, so if we.
We have been actively meeting with the developer on that project, so staff can give you an update on that. And it's, the ball's not in our arena, so we hope to be hearing from, from them.
And I just know that Mr. Levick is talking about twenty percent, which sounded like a lot of money. I don't know. I, I don't understand all of it. Maybe he can educate me on it. Yeah, I, I don't understand all of it. Maybe he can educate me on it.
Well, this, I, I think he's referring to the twenty percent that's required to be low income. It to get it under this program. And I mean, essentially it's a confiscation through building, forcing to build things. That one cannot really recover the cost on if I'm understanding correctly. But I, like I say, I'm looking forward to hearing from Mr. Limkey.
Are we going to hear from these two other gentlemen now?
Well, we will, I will. Encourage you to open a public hearing. Once the questions have been answered, of course, we can, after the hearing is closed, we can ask more questions and, and work through everything.
Uh, are Mr. Yaffe and Mr. Beck expecting to speak or no?
Oh, I think they would speak during the public hearing typically, uh, and then their comments are on record. And I think there's a general, um, you know, uh, uh, understanding by staff. That this twenty percent um, is an incentive, I think the state would argue this is an incentive. Uh, for development to provide some of these housing units that may not otherwise be provided.
But an incentive to who?
An incentive to the developer to create a process with certainty. Because what happens in a typical process is you've got zoning, you've got your general plan land use, you submit. Uh, to, you know, the Community Development Agency, we take a look at it, it goes to the planning commission. You have all this subjective process, you know, where it gets reviewed. Oh, and we want you to do this, want you to do that. You submit in this manner where you've got twenty percent low income units. You just go straight to, you know, the finish line because you have been now provided. As Mr. Lance said earlier, a by right process, which means you don't have to get all of these approvals. And that is worth a lot to, you know, many developers to know that a project is just gonna go. So. It's not a requirement that this overlay, you know, then mandates that the provision. It just is an option for development on the site by right. Uh, if you hit that twenty percent incentive that is, you know, being requested by the state. And there are other elements, you know, of the housing element that the city got pushed back on as far as, you know. Allowing certain types of development in, you know, some of our residential units that we probably would not have otherwise done. But, you know, they're, um, you know, you try to find the middle ground and pick your battles. And uh, so anyways, with that, I would encourage you to open a public hearing and then we can take comment.
All right, um, public comments then please on the housing element.
Good evening again, uh, members of the council, Mike Limkey. Um, thank you for your comments and concerns about public communication. The past two years that the city is working on this has been a complete, absolute terrible failure and bad example of communication. For the two years time, we haven't had one single level item of communication regarding the Limpkey property or your overlay easement intent and what you're doing there. Uh, that has been a complete failure. The overlay easement is an overreach with multiple SEQA violation concerns. Red flag number one, the city does not understand why an experienced local builder developer. Who's concerned on building local housing would have any concern about your overlay easement being applied on our property. We don't want it. It is an encumbrance. Flag number two, the city has never to this day communicated with Limpkey. What I understand, you've spoken to other builder developers about our property, but you never talked to us. Number three, where and who is this coming from? Where is it going to next? We didn't want it. We didn't ask for it. We've never even been part of the conversation. There is a financial incentive from aspects that the city is looking at doing on this on our back. It is only applied to Limpkey property and no others. Normally, I've been through a lot of housing elements and I lean in a lot of support. I've usually supported most everyone I could think of. They're part of the business. I'm one of the few people in the, in the community that actually read the dang document. There is very, a lot of interesting stuff in it, especially if you're in that business. The. The city has multiple R three properties. Typically, the community will identify multiple potential candidates that you'd have that developers and interest parties can come in and do something on. The city has failed to have more than one. And that was the Limpkey property designate that they're trying to designate for the very low income. We used to maintain multiples, half a dozen to ten of them on there. You've got one. Why do you keep doing that? It doesn't even comply with the state law. The state law says maximum ten acres. We have sixteen acres. You had to do creative math to negotiate against us to convince the state. That it was only going to yield less than ten acres. You did that. The state would not have made you do that. You did that. Why don't you have more properties identified on there? Why did you take that route? If you just told me it was sixteen acres? End of conversation. We're in full compliance. You took the extra effort. You spent the extra money. You had goals that you were trying to go after. That was nuts. Why are you doing that? We don't want it. It, it hinders our ability to build local affordable housing without having to jack the prices up. On customers who are having to subsidize their neighbors. My time is out. We could spend hours and weeks and days on this. You didn't even make a single phone call to me. Sorry for being abrupt, but we're upset. We believe in housing. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, council members and city staff. Thanks for having me. Uh, it's been a while since I've been on the side of the microphone, but my name is Quincy Yaley and I'm here on behalf of Mike and Eric Limkey. Um, like Mike who's experienced in building, I have over twenty five years preparing SEQA environmental documents. Uh, and I have had the opportunity to review those documents before the planning commission and before you this evening. Quickly, I just want to mention that there is absolutely nothing certain about building low income housing. Nothing is certain when you build low income housing. Uh, having been through this in my previous position at the county. It's zero certainty when you build low income housing. Um, you may gain local certainty um, from your local agency, but then you go into an oversubscribed funding pool at the state. And the state controls your local housing. I wanted to speak a little bit about the SEQA document and the project description. The document states that the housing elements and the safety elements are policy documents that don't directly involve development. However, the policies in the housing element lead to physical impacts on the environment that go well beyond policy. Through the overlay zone, the housing element creates by right development pathways, removing discretionary approval and future SEQA review. So it's more than just policy. It's a regulatory change with a result on the environment. Through the environmental document, it repeatedly emphasizes that the housing and safety element. Um, are again, policy documents, but it also states on page forty nine. That the housing element includes the creation of the regional housing needs assessment overlay zone um, on the Limpkey site. That means that approving the housing element and its SEQA document effectively approves the SEQA for that Rena overlay zone. And it does it now, not at a deferred time in the future. And if the overlay is used, um, you will never have SEQA review. This is underscored that there was no separate SEQA document at the planning commission for that overlay zone. The, also the overlay zone, um, the doc, the initial study talks about how the overlay zone will result in no impact. Because there's no change in allowable density or base uses. And because future development will have to comply with existing rules and regulations. While the density may not change, there is a potential environmental impact by shifting the review process from discretionary approvals with no, with SEQA. To a ministerial process with no SEQA. That means that no SEQA, no project level mitigation would be done when the by right process is used. Um, that by environmental review of the by right process needs to happen now at a programmatic level. The ISND. Um, states that the project can't be analyzed until there's a meaningful project. And there is a project in the initial, in that housing element. It's a hundred and six units on the Limpkey site. Um, at the county, we were able to work collaboratively with our developers and got their support on a housing element. And um, I think that's what the Limkeys are looking for here too. So thank you.
Quincy, was that title seventeen that you're referring to there with the, when you say that the county?
It was one of, it was one of several.
Okay.
Um, that it was one of several tools that we used and we put um, standards in our zoning code. To um, ensure that the environmental process we did when we created a by right process. Um, met the, met, had some level of SEQA review. So we, we didn't just say that there was no impact when we created um, a by right process. We looked at those impacts, but we put standards in our zoning code to, I will want to, I'll use the word compensate, but that might not be quite the right word.
When I listened to the present, your presentation on title seventeen, my understanding was that if one met criteria. Then by right, it was approved, that there really wasn't um, any way to block it.
That's correct.
If, if they followed the, I mean.
Right.
Criteria for a given development.
And we put those, we put those things in place to ensure that when and if we had a by right development. That, that the county and in your case, the city wouldn't have an unnecessary traffic or evacuation or wildfire risk issue. Yeah, and I think that that's what is missing in this environmental document.
Thank you very much. So I will revisit that when we quit public comment, speaking with the council.
Any further public comment? Um, seeing none, are we now, we will hear from the other two gentlemen? Or what's next steps here?
Yeah, so I think we can, uh, between Lance and I, we can respond to some of those items and then, um. You know, be up to city council to decide what, you know, how you want to move this forward. Um, but the other two gentlemen you're thinking of are.
The, the Mr. Yaffe and Mr. Beck, are they not?
Oh, I see. Yeah, so I think they, yeah, contributed to putting the document together.
So they're just, uh, they're holding up Mr. Lowe. Okay, all right, okay. Then, um, what would you like to respond then?
So Lance, if you don't mind starting and then I can uh, uh, add any additional items afterwards.
Okay, the, uh, you know, updating the housing element, there's, there's several points where you coordinate with H C D. And they provide a preliminary view and they provide comments on the document. Their last review uh, dated June ninth is when the regional housing needs overlay zone came about. So at least at my understanding, that was our first, uh, we first became aware of that requirement. And that is a standard requirement of H C D when you use the same property through multiple housing element cycles. It's, it's, it's right out of the government code. It requires the city to do this. That the housing overlay zone, so we knew about it June ninth. I in turn, uh, sometime after that and prior to the planning commission hearing, called Mr. Limkey. Uh, I did not receive a call back from Mr. Limkey. So right after June ninth and prior to August twenty fifth, the, the planning commission, I, I did. Reach out to Mr. Limkey to have that conversation. I likewise come from a building background. Uh, I worked for a developer before the great recession. I've been a planner, a small town planner for my whole life. Um, and, you know, uh, I, I am certainly in a housing advocate. Uh, I grew up in a low income home for, for, you know, a self built, built home. So I, I, I'm very sensitive to that, that issue. But I, I just want to, I respectfully have to disagree with Mr. Limkey that this provides an encumbrance on his property. It, it does not change the land use. It does not change the type of product. It does not change the standard. It simply memorializes the government code. If you provide twenty percent affordable housing, there's a by right process. That's all it does. Mr. Levy can build market rate houses uh, in accordance with the R three zone. He could build apartments. He can build condos. Um, um, it, um, you know, it, it does not take any entitlement away from him. That he doesn't already have with the current general plan and zoning. Um, so. It, it simply memorializes that there's a process available to a developer if they propose twenty percent. With respect to the SEQA issue, and certainly, and I had to have the, the city attorney chime in. Um, you know, rezoning the property to meet the housing Rena numbers is exempt from SEQA. That's a, that's a recent law. And, and could you uh, add to that? And perhaps Glenn could also chime in.
Yeah, the rezone itself is exempt, but any new project, just to be clear. Any new project is still going to require some level of environmental review. It's, it's the pro, the application process and the processing of the project that is ministerial. Meaning that that takes away the discretion to say that you can't have this level of density here, right? It's, and, and it just, it actually allows more use of the property that couldn't be done before. This is not an encumbrance. It, it, it's actually an expansion. Uh, that's optional, by the way. It, it's not required. No one's forcing anyone to actually build this level of density on that property at any time.
So a little bit of a tricky situation, I guess, you know, we have a little disagreement whether or not it's an actual. Uh, burden that the city is placing on the, on the property. You know, the housing element at this point, we know is uh, is well overdue. I don't know if there's a way uh, to make it uh, more certain. That uh, indeed the, the property is not being unfairly burdened in, in some way.
Well, and, and not to chime in Tyler, but I think that's kind of the problem with the property on the north side of town. That I was talking about earlier, between Elks and Questa Oaks. Is it's got a twenty, apparently what Mark and Melissa kind of explained to me. Uh, and of course, you know, for everybody to hear, because I'm ignorant to it. But um, the twenty percent low income housing really hurts the developers. You know, because now they have to come up with a way to make that twenty percent low income housing. And that was what his comment was about. Uh, in public comment before we even discussed anything on the agenda. And I guess my question is. If it's billed by right, it sounds like he could build whatever he wants. So how does it build by right, but he has to build twenty percent low income housing?
Yeah, I think it, the by right refers to the, the process that the application goes through after it's been submitted. So a typical application would be reviewed by staff, go to the planning commission, could be conditions of approval. That are, you know, you're familiar, can be attached to that development. Um, whereas the by right process, it is, you know, only the objective items. You know, in the code that has to be met. There's no discretionary items at all. Um, and this is a, as we heard from both Lance and the city attorney, this is, it's not an encumbrance. It's, it's actually creates more flexibility in what can be developed on that site. It's a process. It doesn't have to be taken advantage of. There are no requirements associated with this. It's simply an incentive laid down by the state. For communities to provide housing that they may not otherwise try to provide. And so it's.
So no requirement for the twenty percent, no requirement.
If I'm understanding this correctly. You can, you could build how you want and go through all the necessary steps. And, or if you build twenty percent low income housing, you get to skip a bunch of steps, basically.
That's right.
Okay, but you don't have to do that.
You don't have to.
But you can't skip the other steps if you.
If you don't have the.
Twenty percent.
That's right.
Okay.
So Director Somerset, uh, it sounds like the city is imposing this overlay zone though. Is that correct?
So the city, yes.
I mean, if we vote to approve this, we are, we are imposing this overlay zone.
Not yet.
Not yet.
So this is, this is an element that's required on our housing element in order to pass H C D muster. Right? They said you need this, you have to have this. And so we're putting in a housing element. You will have before you an official rezone coming to the council at a later date, which will actually implement. This twenty percent density overlay. And so right now, it, it's not implementation. It's approval of our required housing element pursuant to um, comments. Um comments and information we received from H C D on what is required to be included in order for it to be. Comply in compliance with state law.
So the overlay is is a a complete separate issue that will come later.
Implementation of the overlay, yes, it has to go through uh planning commission at their next meeting. And then if they recommend approval, then it will come to you at a following meeting for you to actually implement that overlay. Until then, it isn't part of the zoning code.
And it's the trickiest part of the housing element because communities say all the time, hey, we wanna build housing for everybody. But then they don't, year over year, they don't. And so then the state steps in and says, hey, you know, if we want to actually provide some of this housing, then there needs to be. Incentives, there need to be cost reducing measures. So this is one of those measures. Again, it is optional though, and it is help.
So the overlay isn't requi- uh requirement, it's just uh it it is an an opportunity for that. That incentive.
That's right.
Okay, if I'm understanding it though, the council will have to pass the overlay in the future for this. Uh for what we're going to vote on now to actually be binding invalid.
But 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 it goes back to the same point of even with the overlay from what Tyler just explained, you don't have to build the twenty percent low income. But you just don't get to skip all the extra steps.
Which is why I'm gonna ask if Mr. Lemke could come back up and explain, because I believe he feels it is an encumbrance. I think it's only fair to give him a few more minutes.
I my biggest issue is I'm hearing a lot of conflicting claims of like whether there's communication, who is zoning what. Or like what the overlay is, so just for my own sake, this specific issue, you know, outside of everything else that's in the housing element. I really wanna put under the microscope and make sure we get this right.
Yeah.
So please, Mr. Lemke, uh yeah, so.
Entire investment and development process, when you put yourself in a community. Uh is all based a lot on faith, trust and integrity. The project I mentioned earlier, we had been working on that for twelve years in this city. This property in question, we've been working on going on almost fifteen now. It's a long term investment, we're not fly by nights, it's a long term thing and we it goes on a lot of confidence. This process of communication already established a complete break in faith and trust in the communication and dialogue with the city. And that's red flag number one, how can we trust what's gonna happen next? Who's driving that? When you, the city had a problem in the past on the Oak Park community, it killed it, it failed it, that was a learning experience. The city did not learn from it, that was a a prominent addiction. Now you're tiptoeing back on into it saying, here, it's just a little bit, it's optional. The county had an optional program as well, for going on about fifteen years now. We're the only local builder who was successfully able to migrate through that process without going bankrupt. There was not a single successful neighborhood built after the county had adopted. That that aspect of it, where there was a claim in fact, and that was only ten percent, it was only a ten percent taking. It's stepping back into the rabbit hole. It initially gets put on the shelf here as it's just an option, it's a freebie. Three votes on a Monday, it just changed. Now it's applied to this and this over here, it is only applicable to this specific property. The city misrepresented themselves to the state and everyone else. The state said, we don't want an over concentration of poverty, of low income, that's. Creates a ghetto, it creates a stigmatization. We do not want this to be put on larger sites, therefore the maximum size will be ten acres. For that was the biggest, we wanted to be small integrated neighborhoods that flow consecutively. When you have a acre, a project that encompasses the size of sixteen acres, an amount of hit from their experience across the state. They know that that is a huge terrible hit that will not be feasible. A lot of times those will start dealing with government grants, whether the taxpayer funding. Or you're leaning on the the neighbors that are also gonna occupy the neighborhood, because those are the people who have to pay the difference. People like to think, oh, it just comes out of a builder or developer's pocket, they pay the difference. No, it's business, cost of goods, it turned into cost of purchase price. So when you have a dramatic offset, you have people who would never qualify for purchase. And frankly, they're better suited for renting. But when you force them into a purchase, this is what we experienced about ten years ago at the financial collapse, you force. Get these people into purchasing something that they can't afford. You're offsetting it by raising the neighbor's price or by taking money from the taxpayer to offset the cost. And the cost is capped, if your cost is five hundred thousand dollars. You're only allowed to sell it at two hundred thousand dollars, whatever that matrix produces. So you see there's somewhere somebody's paying the price, who's paying the price? It ultimately destroys the feasibility entire neighborhood. Having the option aspect. Dislevels the playing field, there are large, I call them the corporate big box nonprofit entities. That come in, that have the big teams, their costs. You'll have small condominiums that a competitive market rate person would have to try to keep under a couple hundred thousand dollars to keep competitive. They're going six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars on units. It almost doesn't care, it's under the government framework because the taxpayer is paying the difference. Or the next door neighbors are paying the difference, so they have no cost discipline. See how it throws the whole machine out, and that's a big factor in what's messed up our state of California housing industry, it becomes totally lopsided. Some of the most profitable trade sectors are going to the nonprofit or affordable housing component. Because somebody else's, the price, the cost keeps going up, but it's paid for by somebody else, that's what's screwed. Messes up the local market. Somebody in city wants to compel it on this property, which would never n- never be approved of by the state. Because it's sixteen acres, you had to work with the math and fudge it and claim that it was feasible. To get the state to think, oh, okay, it's within the compliance and you wrote it into your housing element. Well, to for us to prove the housing element, you have to do this, because city of Sonora, that's what you told us that you could do. And you told us that was feasible, I'm telling you, it's not feasible, show me your, show me your real example. You're using hypotheticals to make the math work for the state, it's a misrepresentation of the process, it was not the intent. In a brief quick summary, yeah, if we had dialogues, we could have achieved much more of a win win situation. Sitting down, discussing and negotiating, how do we get to this? First thing I would have said is, hey, you used to have nine, nine properties on your list. Why do you only have one? And don't be pointing to Quest Oaks, because that's, that was an approved map and you had nothing there. You're not gonna get moderate out of that, that's a done story, you only have one that you segmented to the lower price range. Only one property out of the entire city of Sonora. Why? That is a failure in the process, you should have had at least three, four, or five that were actually the right size that would fit and be appropriate. That's a breakdown in faith and competency and trust in the process. You put something that the city values, put it on the shelf, why do you wanna do it? Because you're getting value out of it. We try to do something else, three votes sometime in future, for whatever reason determines. Gee, we don't like that, you wanna get approval through this process, you gotta do something different. Why do we wanna go through that process? We wanna be treated fairly and properly, just like any other property, we already have the zoning in place. It's set up for density, it's set up for us to be able to come in to get good local affordable housing. You're skewing it, you're putting your thumb on on the scale. You can throw out some arguments, but you can't prove any of those statements wrong, that that's that's valid. Show me the math on the calculations, how you made sixteen acre site turn less than ten acres.
Oh, Mr. Lemke, sorry, I'm sorry, but you know, what is your original plan for your sixteen acres? I I don't, you know, I'm I'm sorry, you're talking way above my pay grade, but um I um I know, I know basically where the property is. And what are your plans for it? Uh what are, what what are you proposing to do there?
Awesome question. We had met with the city, we've been going through long terms. Due diligence, study and review, we had discussed with city staff. During the initial acquisition from the county who had government center plans there, nobody liked that. They wanted to see residential, we wanted to get achieve enough density in our residential. So we can get some local affordability, this is not tourist housing, it's not luxury mansions. We needed to get local workforce housing there that working people could actually afford to make the mortgage payments. This is not a government subsidized or taxpayer funded housing, it's that local people could afford to live locally. I got on the commission on aging, because the senior center is right there, elementary school is right there, and I had the dreams to be on a show. That actual real picture of a grandparent walking her grandchild to the elementary school, that is what I wanted to deliver, is a local neighborhood housing project.
How many, how many units? Or or was it mixed?
Well, the the the, we already have R three density. That means we can build over a hundred units. We're not gonna build something wrong or that doesn't fit, you'll see lots of examples where people have failures because they over map, they over drew it. We're actually builders, so I will not stress that, we've come up with different plans in our, over the years. Market has a vote, community has, the the buyers have a vote and then the cost of it. So it's ma magically lining up everything. It has to be density, we have not, currently we do not have a plan submitted to you, until we do. It doesn't tell you what we our final agreement is, I have mapped out and I have drawn out hundred plus. Gone from uh ten to a hundred plus. But we want to build something that through local uh people who actually work locally can afford to buy it. And so that's gonna be in the less than hundred, more than fifty, hitting the sweet spot with design. Balance and all the math lining on up. We've done, been doing our homework, it's it's, I've, we had made presentations with the community, um at different kernel. Events, had our boards on up, soliciting input, knocking door to door on Morningstar, checking with the neighbors, what would you like to see? What would, what have you done seen here and you'd like to see different? I've never had a failed neighborhood development in my entire career, we do our homework. We're not gonna blow on go, I I work for the corporate entities, so I delivered over a thousand plus homes per year. This is local, this is a family company. This is our name on it, it's blasted all over the place, Lemke Property, I'm not gonna allow something substandard to get put on there. The direction that we're putting on this shelf right now, easing into this over overlay easement. Is going in a direction I cannot afford to have my name be attached to, it's already being attached as. Something unsavory and undesirable, I want safe family housing in in that community there. The proposal on that is to ignore all community input in the project and you've given no guidelines. As long as I meet fire and get my road built right, community has no say if I follow the city's overlay easement. And I do the government housing component of having twenty percent where the neighbors or taxpayers are offsetting the cost. That is the city's plan right now with the overlay easement, because they argue that my sixteen acres is really less than ten. That's what the fib that's been told to the state of California, it is wrong, it's a bad representation.
And that, that's my biggest concern, it's this disparity between how we calculate numbers right now. Which I personally would very much love some clarity on why the housing element has one number and the development has another. Is it due to slope or something? I saw that.
Fifteen percent slope and they go through what Mr. Lemke describes as contortions in order to make it. Ineligible for normal development and qualify for our Rena number.
Who is they?
Who is they?
Yeah, and that's my my follow up question is who actually drafted these these maps? Or is this a state of California thing? Is this something that we did?
So just to clarify, the reason that this property qualifies for the overlay. Is because it's been in the housing element identified in this manner for ten years at least. And so the state has said, you keep talking about this property, now here's what you can do to incentivize this. That's the reason the property is in there regardless of the the acreage. Not because of some contortion by city staff or some, you know, uh you know, odds behind a curtain. Because it's been in the housing element for a very long time, saying this is, this is a property we wanna develop.
If you told it was sixteen acres, it wouldn't qualify.
Okay, and but Director Somerset, uh or other staff as needed. What happened to the other, I think you said nine, Mr. Lemke? Other properties that were formerly zoned like this and qualified for uh this designation, what happened to those?
I think you got about a hundred R three properties in the community, why have we been lazy and only still have one on there? If that three, four, five, twenty.
Is the, I mean, if, cause if we have lots.
So I don't have the answer to that as far as, you know, what happened, they may have developed in some way. They may have changed hands or changed zoning, you know, over time, which is not uncommon. Uh so I can't answer that specifically, but the reason that this property got into. You know, uh H C D's sites is because the city has identified it now for a very long time.
As needing development.
Well, as 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 a potential residential development site. With an R three zoning, which allows for all sorts of density, all sorts of building types. Which could meet all sorts of different, as Mr. Lemke said himself, a working class, you know, kind of bootstrap type development. That's not mandatory, you know, and to and to, you know, characterize that as gross. You know, this idea of trying to provide various income levels uh is tough, you know. And it's hard for a community to provide different types of housing. And we've already heard from the city attorney, this is not a requirement, we have not heard. We've heard some uh about another development, which I'm, I don't even know what the requirements were on that one, but this is not it.
So that 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 raises a question for me in terms of if we're not imposing uh or or. If we are indeed zoning this under certain guidelines that'll qualify for a twenty percent requirement in order to bypass things. I I guess my question is what, what changes if we leave it as is versus designate this as eligible? For this other option, it I I'm just, cause I'm trying to be, you know, sympathetic to Mr. Lemke's concerns. And I wanna make sure that as, you know, developers are happy and getting what they need. But if this is purely optional, I I just, I struggle to understand why this, like, the narrative is we're imposing this. When, correct me if I'm wrong, if this is just another avenue or an option to bypass certain regulations. And you can still develop however you so choose. Like I I'm just trying to understand what's the disincentive here, or like what what changes with this designation ultimately?
Yeah, if I can chime in on that, um the the point of this is, is that the state of California requires. A certain amount of area in the city's jurisdiction to have this twenty percent density. Like ministerial process in place, right? And it has to be, you have to designate speci- excuse me, I'm speaking, you have to designate specific areas for that. That it that it is feasible, I mean, he, I would say, Mr. Uh um is it Mr. Lemke? Is Lemke property named after the property owner?
Yes.
Um he hit it on the head in that it would require. Three votes on a Monday to make this a required twenty percent dense uh low income density. Like you, right now, all the city is doing is complying with state requirements. That allow developers or certain property owners to bypass discretionary approval processes. Which are expensive and lengthy, there's a specific ministerial process set out that if you decide, you don't have to. If you decide that you are going to build a development that has this twenty percent high density requirement met. Then you don't have to go through all of the hoops and costs of going through the discretionary approval process. Which is mostly design review, that's the heaviest part that they get to skip, is the design review portion. If he doesn't want to follow the twenty percent density and go through the normal process and have a development of. Whatever it is he chooses, as long as it meets the city requirements that are already in place, by the way. Because this doesn't change any other requirements of the city's approval process for any. Because this doesn't change any other requirements of the city's approval process for any development. Then he can do that. There's, he's not required to do anything, it, it's, he keeps calling it an overlay easement. Which implies that there's some kind of encumbrance on the property, there's no easement here. It's an overlay zone on a map for the city zoning that designates and says, if you choose for this property, you may skip certain city processes and do your development faster and cheaper. The state requires that because we're in a housing crisis.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you earlier, I just, that's what I really wanted clarification on was, we're not requiring and, or, you know, the city or the state is not requiring that Mr. Limkey, uh, builds the twenty percent affordable housing. He still has full sovereignty over the development of, of how this goes forward. It's just again, if he chooses the option to include that, then he gets to bypass certain regulations. But he's still very much within his rights to develop the way that he sees fit. If he navigates through the normal process, just like any other project or development, is, is that a accurate summation?
Absolutely, so, so long as he's following all the normal rules. And I apologize, I can't see very well who's speaking and I thought that came from a member of the audience, so.
Oh, no, no, you're, you're.
You can interrupt me anytime you'd like.
I should have let you speak, like, first, first full stop. But I, I do, there is the, the other issue of the communication aspect here, that if Mr. Limkey has felt like singled out or like he hasn't been communicated with, putting all of this legal bureaucratic stuff aside, that to me is an issue. And I would very much like to rectify that by either, you know, again, putting this under a microscope, finding a way that, that makes you happier. Maybe it's just, this is an example of legislators above our heads deciding how these exceptions or options or whatever work and it's kind of out of our hands in that regard, but I I, I just want to say to you, like, I, I'm willing to take however much time it needs to make this happen. Speaking as someone that lives right next to this development, I would love to see it developed, I've been waiting for this for decades now. So I, I'm very much in favor of, of allowing developers to do exactly that, but I, I also want to give you your time to feel like you're being heard. And I certainly don't want to be seen, or this council to be seen as an enemy to development or increasing our housing stock in any way. Like, I want to make that very clear.
Uh, one, one, one thing though, real quick, Andy, uh, I think what Mr. Limkey is really worried about is just the fact that if the state decides to change its mind and say, okay, now we need, because right now it's a stipulation that we have to have a certain amount of properties zoned for this. If the state changes their mind down the road and goes, you know what, you have to have this zoned for this and he has no other options.
Well, well, right now, I mean, it's, we, we have, you know, there would have to be a hundred and fifty, uh, other buildings.
And I understand, uh, my, my point is though, is that it's a, it's an optional site and I think what his worry is, is down the road, it might turn into a into an encumbrance, because then he might, you know, three votes on a Monday and then he has, and then all of a sudden this is, this isn't an option anymore. And I think that that's what his worry is and I can, I can really empathize with them on it because, uh, it's his property.
Yeah, well, but we can't control what the state does.
Or what future councils do, but I'm very much opposed to.
Right, and I think we can argue with.
I would like to ask Ms. Pritchard a question on that though. And that is, once this has this overlay, can a future council change it so that only that type of housing with the twenty percent uh, low income be built there? Or is it an irrevocable change that only Mr. Limkey can control?
So it depends, uh, obviously whenever, uh, so if the state changes the law, right? And says that you're required to designate a certain amount of properties, then it is up to the local jurisdiction to decide how that's going to look within their jurisdiction as far as zoning is concerned, and so that's one level of protection. The second level of protection is that if, if Mr. Limkey is pursuing a development, if he has already began the process of, of applying and permitting. It, just an application, submitting application, that protects him by law from rezones that would affect and, and change what he wants to develop. And so if he's on a, I mean frankly though, if he's on, um, a slow schedule and the law changes in two years and he hasn't submitted an application and the council decides that this is the best property and option to implement some kind of new state requirement, then he has less protection. That, that is true. But it sounds like, uh, he's got a, a develop in mind and I know they take a long time. But if he's submitted an application and is working on a project and he's, everyone is on notice now that that's occurring, it does provide some level of protection and restrict the ability of the city to rezone that area. So it, it just depends on what, when it happens, what the requirement is, I mean, it's a really hard question to answer precisely.
Thank you, but you've actually done a, a wonderful job of answering it, at least to my satisfaction, which is to say that at this current time, it quite possibly doesn't impose anything. But that could easily change in the future depending on politics across this state.
State legislation.
Um, Tess, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I mean, it sounds like now we're getting into arguing possible future consequences, which is, is well worth talking about, of course. Um, what, I, I guess this is a question for staff or the city attorney, what are our options right now? Because it sounds like this is a state mandate at this point.
And we, yeah, and we are not voting on the, the overlay.
Right.
That, that is, so we're just voting on the housing element.
Right.
So the overlay is an issue that will go to the planning commission and the next meeting and then come back to the council.
But, but it sounds like, is this part of the state mandate that you have to have a certain some properties within your city under this overlay?
And, and on that note, how many other properties would be eligible for this sort of zoning at this current stage?
Because I mean, we're discussing this as if.
No, it's a lot of hypotheticals.
To put the overlay on or not, but I'm just kind of wondering how much of a choice is it at this point?
The only reason why you have an overlay requirement from the state is because you keep reusing our property. If you had done your proper due diligence per councils and actually maintained a list, you would be fresh and alive. You are getting penalized because you've been lazy and not rejuvenating and not taking it seriously, so you keep reusing us. If you, if you just represented the fact that it was a sixteen acre site and your calculations were a little skewed, pretending it was ten acres. No discussion, no comment, you'd have a housing element that's fully approvable tonight and it'd be done.
Yeah.
But since you pushed that threshold to force this thing to fit somewhere it wasn't supposed to, that's why you're having to do the overlay, otherwise they wouldn't.
So your, your basic problem is that your property is in the housing element.
No, no, no.
No, it's that it's singled out, it's that there's, your, your numbers differ.
I guess that's my question now is because, you know, most of us haven't weren't involved in any of those past decision, or I wasn't.
Well, the staff hasn't either.
Or the staff hasn't, we're under.
It, it's all marketing.
Now, what is our, what is our options now?
So, I mean, we're limited, obviously, if we want a, a certified housing element. I think what we've seen happen in the housing world is, we know we're not providing enough housing. And so the state says, how do we help get there? And so they have some draconian measures now, one of which is called the builder's remedy. And that are, um, you know, avenues for developers to come in and just build housing without having to get the city's approvals because so many projects, as Mr. Limkey shared, uh, die in the process because it takes so long, it becomes so hard. So you get things like the builder's remedy, which are buy right processes or this twenty percent, which is an incentive. Uh, to say, hey, let's, let's help move this along. I think in our case, obviously, we have identified this in previous cycles, which is why, you know, it's eligible now. Fact that it's sixteen acres is all over the document, there's no, no surprise there, it's not that anybody can't figure that out, that's clearly identified. Um, you know, I think as you stated, Councilmember Levine, we could do, you know, uh, fourteen thousand different things that could happen in the future moving forward. You know, I remember, I think back to, you know, when we were approving the, uh, you know, uh, short term rental ordinance. And we were nervous, at least there was some discussion about huge conglomerates coming in and buying up our housing stock and turning it. You know, these things, you know, it's good to say them out loud sometimes, but often, of course, they're, you know, just thought experiments. And I think, you know, we know now that this does not actually impact what Mr. Limkey can do with his property. Not today, you know, not in the future. Now, sure, everything could change and we could have an authoritarian state that, you know, dictates to every city what it can and can't do. I guess I don't see that happening anytime in the very near future, it would be a significant break with the way a relationship between the state and cities and counties works, but you never know. Um, you know, we could table this, you know, item, we could, you know, further delay the certification, put certain funding at risk for, let's say, community development block grant and other state, uh, dollars. And, and work through this process more extensively with Mr. Limkey until we either uh, come to some agreement or otherwise, um, you know, I don't, uh, you know, we could try to get creative and, and figure out some other solution, which, you know, I think we've bound our hands, you know, in some ways, just because we've now, you know, we're in the seventh cycle and I think in the, in the fourth and, uh, but maybe as late as the fifth, we started identifying this property as an opportunity area, so. You know, we are in a tight spot now and, uh, there is no great answers, but we can certainly trade off, to trade off potential future funding for, you know, more time here to, to negotiate.
Could we try a different thought experiment? Because, uh, staff puts us as the council under, I mean, uh, quite a bit of pressure in order to qualify for funding and stuff. But everything we're talking about is contingent upon the planning commission and eventually the city council actually approving the overlay. So the thought experiment part is, because, I mean, I'm under the same pressure as everybody else to approve this, just because it has to be done for the good of the city, and it does to some degree. But I am not going to approve this overlay as it appears now. I mean, it, sixteen acres can't be, you know, whittled away to nine point six, I think it is, just because that's convenient. What I'm asking is, will that give us time in order to go look for at some of the prior properties that qualified, et cetera? And, and to do our homework, you know, behind the scenes, so. And communicate with Mr. Limkey, I mean, that is one of the big problems that he has had, that he heard from Mr. Low, uh, and probably didn't know who he was. But Director Somerset hasn't contacted him and that would be a lot more meaningful. So if we go that route, does this give us another month or two where we actually can cure some of the failings and maybe come up with something that works for everybody?
Could you clarify your route, please?
The route to either find other prior properties that used to be.
So are you saying we approve the housing element and not?
Well, we'll discuss that, I mean, I'm saying I won't as, if it's only this one property and the overlay, I'm at least with what I know now, and maybe I'm still too ignorant, that's possible. But as with what I know now, I am not going to approve the overlay.
Okay, but the overlay is.
But I, I understand that, so, and.
But the property is named in.
Yes, which is a valid concern, yeah.
So, so that, um, precludes the housing element as well.
Um, well, and that's why I'm asking if it does, if it, with extra time, if we can identify other properties. I mean, if it's a zero sum game, it can't be done.
So I, I just would love, uh, maybe Lance or Glenn to kind of weigh in on this because um, this process started and the first community outreach on this housing element actually started with Rochelle when Rochelle was still here, so. I remember those community workshops that we all held and participated in. Um, and Mark, I think you were there when I was there, these, these properties were well on the map. And so you were there, yeah, so we've, we've had levels of public outreach and communication, so I know that those meetings, um, and correspondences happened. Um, and then we recognize that this property has been identified for this purpose in multiple cycles. Tyler just said, going back at least maybe four or more cycles. So I would love to hear from Lance or Glenn, can you explain to me, um, why this property? Were there nine others? And if there are nine developable pieces of property, I would love to meet those owners and start developing those parcels and properties. Um, and then also, can you clarify for the council, the conversation, the debate we're having over the ten versus sixteen? Uh, and put maybe that question to bed for all of us?
Well, with, with respect to the background and the public outreach and how this came back, I'd have to, to defer to uh, Michael Baker International who prepared the housing elements. Uh, I believe Michael Yaffe and Rich Beck are, are present and could perhaps speak to the, the background of that. Uh, with respect to, uh, the gross acreage versus the acreage that was, um, um, determined. It was based on, uh, you know, topography and areas that were considered undevelopable. Just based on, uh, site constraints as well as, um, you know, average densities that the city has proved, um, in the past. And so based on those factors, it was considered to be nine point one nine acres. And then they, the, the, used the density that the city has approved in the R three zone with a high density residential, um, like an average of, of, of those projects to come up with a theoretical, uh, perhaps more of a realistic density based on those factors.
So and the zone overlay can apply to nine acres, sixteen acres, three acres? It just has to apply to the percentage of land available for the twenty percent if the builder chose to go that way?
And I'd have to look at, and perhaps the, the city attorney can chime in, but I'd have to look at the, the government code section, I don't know, I mean, there's a stipulation for less than ten acres and certainly that's a requirement that Mr. Limkey has pointed out. But the requirement here is that the city has, uh, included this property in past housing elements. And it still has yet to be, to, to meet a, a, a form arena and has still yet to be developed. Christina, do you want to perhaps add some?
I, I don't have the government code section directly in front of me right now as far as the less than ten, ten acres, over ten acres requirement. Uh, but I know that the HCD letter that was provided in June did specifically call out this property and require that the zoning be updated to comply with what has been identified in, uh, the prior housing elements and this most recent, um, update to the housing element, so. I, I can pull that, but it's, it's going to take me a few minutes to do so and I'm not sure that it's totally necessary for this conversation in this moment.
Thank you, and then I guess the other question is, um, were there other parcels? Um, I think having not been identified within the last handful of cycles, I'm just interested if Glenn or Michael Baker can weigh in as to why nine additional properties were not evaluated.
It probably would need to get some feedback from the, uh, Michael Baker, project manager, who's not available this evening. I'm not sure if Rich or Michael can address that, um, in terms of the arrival of Lenkey and what else, else was considered in, in doing that analysis. So I'd turn it over to the Baker team if you have some input.
Yeah, I would have to look back in the prior reports, Glenn, as well. Um, I'm not sure as far as the historic properties that were reviewed, past documents, which ones of those were. Uh, if they were documented, we'd be able to provide that list.
Is it common for these lists to be carried over cycle after cycle?
Uh, as far as the properties being identified in the element updates, typically the same properties are held if, if kept available.
Thank you.
So yeah, how did we go from nine to one then?
Uh, it just, there hasn't been nine in the last, I think, five cycles that we, and so that was my question, is it typical? And so that was my question, is it typical for the same properties to be carried over cycle to cycle? And so, um, Rich answered that. Um, so and Ty- Tyler, remind me, how long is a cycle? Five years. So we're thinking this has been identified in how many cycles that we're aware of? Okay, so um, this isn't a new conversation.
These other properties, if in fact they were there, somehow got off of this list. Does one ask to be taken off or, I mean, I think how they how they disappeared from the reservoir of available properties, I think is something that we ought to know and.
I don't know that we ever had them. I I was just rethinking and trying to question a a statement that Mr. Limkey made, that there were nine additional.
Phrase that if we had them.
Yeah, and so I was wondering if the team was aware, because these are the only two properties that I've been aware of. Um, and uh, before Rochelle's retirement, these were on the list. They were part of the public discussion. Um, they were known to be on the list. And so I I myself am just not aware that there were any others for consideration. So if Mr. Limkey has that information, I would welcome knowledge of that.
I don't have the list in my pocket, but as I said earlier, I'm one of the few people in the committee that probably actually reads these things. I look at the properties, that's the business I'm in, work when housing happened, what's feasibility. Uh, they most likely got taken off generally because everyone you got on there means there's some work involved. But that's the whole intent, is you're supposed to have potential properties that you could do something on and then you'd have them zoned. Uh, look at all your R three properties that you have in the city of Sonora. Every one of those technically would be R three or R two would technically be viable for this, for being on that list. It's just how many, you don't want to put three hundred properties on there. You put a handful that represents potential. Doesn't mean that anybody's gonna build something specifically on it today or in the future. That's your job is just to show some inventory, because they just went down to one because it's just easier. Why am I paying the price? Because somebody didn't want to spend a few extra minutes. You spent entire year and thousands and thousands of dollars in studies on this and you're still just putting all on us.
So while we're having this discussion, since we can almost never talk together, I I listened to Quincy Yaley's presentation for the Title seventeen changes that the Board of Supervisors made. We may want to contemplate something similar where basically if you met the criteria for any building or development, if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong Quincy, but if a builder or developer just met the criteria that was outlined clearly in Title seventeen, that it would just sail through. You didn't have to go through design review and everything else uh, and have fifty stops along the way to build something.
Are you saying to make it easier to build stuff?
I think everybody on this council favors that and so we we may want to revisit it and there's almost no other forum where we can talk about it.
No, I had no idea that the building could just sail through in the county.
Well, that was, that was, that was the intent of Title seventeen changes. If, is that correct, Qu- Quincy?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I sat through, it seemed like five or six hours of.
Yeah, it was um, a pretty fantastic feat that the um, previous Board of Supervisors accomplished. We did that at their direction. And um, not only residential, but commercial buildings as well. We created a a nu- a number of streamlining tools and actually, uh, your current TCTC director, uh, Tamara Blankenship, also who uh, has disappeared, I can't give her a a direct shout out for that, but was also largely responsible for uh, creating housing design stand, uh, objective design standards that met the law, met the state law. Um, so that you could have um, multifamily, um, by right, straight to the building permit processes. Um, of course, anything that required a subdivision map or a parcel map, not able to, not able to circumvent the subdivision map act. Um, but uh, we did, we were very successful in that. Um, and it's something that the county should be proud of.
And the city can maybe find a way to emulate.
I just can't believe the county made something easy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up Quincy.
Thank you.
But just getting back to like what we actually have before us here and trying to find some form of compromise. Um, I would very much like to approve the housing element, however, um, I would really like cause if I'm getting my timeline and everything straight, this rezoning question is still gonna have to go through the planning commission and then come back to us at a future date for it to be official, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, so just again, if we approve this, it's under the assumption that that is the way that things are gonna go, essentially.
That's right.
So my ask is if we could approve this and then again, find a way to make it clear that we're not singling Mr. Limkey out or indeed do our homework and find these alleged other properties that might meet the requirements and do that and include them as part of that future rezoning conversation. Or i- maybe we've already done that and this is it. I I don't know. I'm trying to find a compromise here.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, I mean, you cannot adopt it and, you know.
No, I'm saying I do want to adopt this, it's just the next steps.
Good at this point for us to adopt the document and not be in support of the rezone.
I understand that.
So in that sense, I'm saying if that's direction, you know, then I think we, you know, we know then that as staff, we go back to the drawing table and we come back with, um, you know, some augmented document that, you know, will likely take us some more time. We're, we'll be out of contract with our uh, uh, consultant team. So we'll, you know, there'll just be some expenses there, but at the end of the day, you know, the state's been waiting for, you know, over a year now, uh, we keep them waiting. We know that we become ineligible for certain funds into the future. Uh, while this is remaining, you know, unsettled and and, you know, we come back with something that we can all be more comfortable with.
Uh, Tyler, so at the beginning, um, before we discussed this matter, Mr. Limkey brought up the fact that the property, I'm guessing it was a property between Elks and Quest Oaks, uh, was twenty percent. It was the same basic thing that we're talking about right now. So my thought is, why is that property not identified? Are they just, are they just backwards on that? They don't want to build it anymore because this is just a potential site?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that site, you know, what, why it didn't go and.
Yeah, and that goes like back twenty years. I mean, I was looking at purchasing that property at one point because I was like, oh, it's for sale. And then I saw what they their plans were and it was pretty big plans and way too much money for me to afford, so.
Christina, is there any chance?
Suggestion?
Okay, great, thank you.
If I could just make a suggestion, it sounds to me like the council just really needs more information in order to make an informed decision and it also seems as though that really this has to, the housing element does really need to go hand in hand with the zoning overlay, otherwise the housing element is gonna have to be revised anyway in order to deal with this compliance issue. And so I think that what would make the most sense if, if the council is not wanting to move forward with adoption now, we could bring it back when the overlay comes back to council after it goes to planning commission with as much additional information as possible on why this property, i- if staff can find it, right? Because like you said, it predates this council, it predates staff, but there should be some, at least some additional information that we can provide or staff can provide on how we got to where we are today with the Limkey property and its identification for this purpose.
Yeah, that that sounds like a great idea and if there is an opportunity to excise this property out of the housing element and just remove that encumbrance, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, in, at the very least, it will give all of us time to become more aware of the different issues involved and give staff and Mr. Limkey time to maybe find some mutual solutions that work. But I, so I would, and actually would be prepared to approve this uh, just because it gives us breathing room and time for staff and Mr. Limkey to try and find solutions.
Would, would you be thinking like November three, um, for returning or or uh, further out?
So I just have a question for Christina. Um, so if not Mr. Limkey's property, somebody's property, right?
Correct, it will be someone's property.
With any property that gets identified, um, with similar questions and concerns. So, um, I agree that there does need to be a few answers here, but just want to let you know that some property will have to be identified.
And and that's fine. I think we're just asking, we need to know, you know, just to put this whole like Mr. Limkey feeling singled out here issue to bed, if there are other eligible properties that fit this or if, you know.
Only if you have a reuse. The overlays only encumbered upon, we're encumbering upon ourselves. Only if the city's identifying a reused property that fits within the parameters. You do not, you do not have that with a Limkey property, it doesn't fit within the parameters. If you don't have a property, then you just tell the state, we don't, even though we reused it, it's sixteen acres. Done. No penalty, no issues. It's because it was reused a few times and you told them that it was less than ten acres, that's why we're having this conversation. If you just said it's a sixteen acre parcel, the conversation's done, approve the housing element, we're all happy, it's all good. Approve what the county did and we're double, triple happy.
And just for for clarity's sake too, just because again, on this note, um, this is page five or a hundred eighty-one of the agenda packet. Kind of middle of the page, second paragraph, or I guess the whole page really, but uh, sorry, third paragraph, it says, uh, though the parcel is larger than ten acres, only nine point one nine acres of the parcel are identified as the RHNA site for housing. So essentially what, are are we kind of like subdividing at this point? Or like identifying a smaller subset of a larger?
That that's the creative math that the city performed to say that it complied.
But but the reason I'm asking if it's not builder, buildable is because it's talking about a zero to fifteen percent slope. And then I look across the street from where I live and there's houses built on thirty to forty degree slopes. So to call them unbuildable is not really, at least in my humble experience of like, that's my neighborhood? That's kind of why I'm like, I just need more information on this, you know, like how did we get to? And and is it, is it, is that like legal to to essentially take a contiguous non-subdivided piece of property and treat it as smaller than? Um, again, I'm, I'm just using my own two eyes. I know what a like, you know, I've driven over Sonora Pass, I know what grade percentages mean and I know that we have a hell of a lot more than fifteen percent in multiple, you know, residences in my neighborhood.
I think what staff is is saying is that, whether, you know, whether any of us agree with it or not, is that this property has already been identified as being appropriate for this overlay for however, ten, fifteen years and now it is kind of too late to go back and say, oh no, we changed our mind, it's not applicable, is that correct?
Well, I think, uh, maybe we can have our uh, attorney speak to that. Uh, about whether, um, that that you change your mind on whether or not a property is um, applicable for um, the housing element.
But I mean, you you can always update your evaluations and assessments of of properties in the community. I think the main issue is that it has been relied upon for so long. One, it's hard to say that there wasn't notice because it's been talked about and discussed in previous housing elements and notice. But also it will be costly and delay the process to it basically with the result you're you're asking for. If you're asking to remove this property as an option, even or to to consider other properties at this point is is to restart that process with regard to this specific designation for this portion of compliance. And so it's it's costly and delay and there are, they they hasn't happened so far, but there are penalties associated with not adopting your house, housing element in a timely manner. And luckily, the state has not imposed those so far and there hasn't been those repercussions. But um, it has already been quite delayed and so I think staff's concern is that this could result in loss of funding, other penalties, builder remedies that were um, not contemplated and could cut against what the city's goals and um, you know, funding obligations are. And so it's just a consideration on on the the negative effect that more delay and costs could have. But it is totally possible and there's no reason you can't amend your housing element or reevaluate your designations.
Okay, I'm just gonna say where I, you know, because I think we could go kind of in circles with this. I'm just gonna say where I stand right now. Um, I think sometimes we have to make really hard decisions that might not seem totally fair and equitable and this might be one of those times that I think that we should pass the housing element as it stands. Give our good faith to Mr. Limkey that we are gonna do better with communication, we're gonna do better with, you know, being more open and communicating with him. And we are also going, we have no plans of making this a requirement. So as it stands, he would have several years before that would even be an option with a new council, which I can never foresee that happening. Um, and like.
You're talking thirteen months.
We've gotten, we've, you know, it's been explained to us tonight that there could be some serious negative repercussions to this in terms of cost for the city, losing out on funding. And as it stands now, he, Mr. Limkey is not going to be subject to this twenty percent of low income housing if he does not choose to at this time.
Very well said.
Yeah.
I I kind, I have to agree with this because, I mean, we have one individual here uh, that apparently we've done everything we can so that he can develop his property as um, as he would like to. Um, and we will make every effort to continue to um, engage and um, and facilitate his development, uh, because it sounds fantastic. But I think, you know, the housing element needs to go forward. Um, the overlay is a secondary issue, um, and um, good luck to the planning commission. So, um.
They're gonna hoist it off on us anyway.
Um, well, I mean, they'll, they'll have, I'm sure, a limbic discussion about that as well. Um, but in the meantime, um, I mean, we need to move forward with the housing element and hopefully, um, these other uh, properties will be excavated from the recesses of everyone's um, research and uh, historical documents. And uh, when we next revise the housing element, they will be included. So um, I would ask for a motion to um, to approve the housing element.
May I make a comment before we go to voting and so I tend, vis a vis government, even though I'm in it right now, to identify with the person outside of a feeling that government is a, often a heavy hand. And you get a lot of things imposed that you just don't care for. To me, this overlay element seems arbitrary and capricious. And I am going to vote for the approval, but one, so that we keep the process going and with the expectation or hope that staff and Mr. Limkey during the time that goes forth before it comes back to us, will be able to communicate that we will hopefully get some of Mr. Limkey's list of other properties that used to be there and we will deal with that separately. But this gives us some breathing room to approve it now uh, and take care of the issues and try and cure them before we run into that deadline where we're losing CBDG grants and other things.
Is that a motion?
I will move to approve, Val, what is it now? I need glasses and everything, crying.
Ten dash twenty dash twenty twenty-five.
Yes, that one, ten dash twenty dash twenty twenty-five C, amending the city's general plan to improve the housing element.
May I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four one.
And Mr. Limkey, maybe, may I just state, I do support your development and future plans and stuff. As someone that probably lives closer in in. As someone that probably lives closer, in, in closer proximity to, to that proposed development, I, I do support your, your plans moving forward in the future.
We all support.
I think we all support.
Well, that, and we want to see a resolution that is fair, but that works for, I mean, we, I think Mr. Lemke is the only developer working, actually developing in the city.
You might be right.
And, you know, I, that needs to be taken into account as well.
Yeah.
And thank you very much for your time and for coming.
For your input.
Thank you, Mr. Lemke.
All right. Moving forward with quarterly reports, they were all very extensive. Um, and thank you, thank you very much. Um, I did want to ask um, community development, um, if uh, could, could you tell me what a CALOES project is? Tyler? On, on your quarterly report, um, you talked about a CALOES, C A L O E S project. What, what is that?
The uh, which, what was the acronym again?
Uh, C A L O E S.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's uh, the California Office of Emergency Services.
Ah, okay.
So that was the funding we received as a result of the Washington fire to rebuild the.
Ah, okay. And there was a building permit, um, B twenty-three dash zero one twenty-two. I wondered where it was.
Uh.
That's Brian.
Yeah, that would be uh, oh, the Health Pavilion.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah. Um, uh, no, as anyone else, uh, I, I don't think anybody wants to um, add to their quarterly reports, but they're certainly welcome to if they would like to. Um, they're really impressive and um, I, um, I'm just um, in awe of what you accomplished in a, in a quarter, all of the um, all of our agencies. Uh, I did want to ask, uh, oh, Carly's not here. Um, we have a draft speed bump policy?
We do.
Holy cow.
So that will be uh, forthcoming to, I think, the first meeting in November. Kind of excited about that.
Okay, okay.
I'm very excited about.
Bracing for that. Yeah.
It's uh, it's gonna be a good time. So, yeah, when we have it.
Isn't it always?
We have several very interested residents, I think, that will love to weigh in on our speed bump policy.
Okay, well, thank you. Anyone else have questions for the quarterly report or comments? All right. Council member reports, you have thirty seconds.
Okay. Uh, I had, I, 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 that, that, that's it. Okay. No, I had Irwin. Uh, we are redoing our plans. Um, and Caroline said, thank you. She's got almost everybody she needs. So thank you, Ann, for supplying that. Uh, and we, we're just basically re, going over everything. And when they're talking, I'm trying to listen. And sometimes it sounds like jargon, but I'm doing what I can to keep up with them. And I got a whole bunch of stuff to review and stuff to give to Melissa and Tracy probably to, you know, bog them down even more. So that's about it.
All right. Beth?
Um, I don't have anything to share tonight.
Uh, I was at the Solid Waste Committee. Um, apparently, uh, if we, uh, as city residents still have issues with household hazardous waste, we can still use county facilities to do so. It was very nice to see Cal Waste at that meeting as well, um, representing their plans and intentions and all that fun stuff. Um, uh, TCTC, the big thing for um, sorry, it's just kind of distracting. Um, for TCTC, we uh, sorry, lost my train of thought. We talked about the need for the city and county to get on the same page when it comes to the north-south connector. That's the big takeaway. Um, one way or another, you know, I, I expressed my concerns that, you know, this whole time we've been led to believe that we're gonna get county support. And if that's not the case, you know, why was that not brought up previously, yada, yada, yada? Led to the decision to have a conversation about it. That's the big thing. Um, most of the other stuff is closed session stuff. I can't talk about here. Uh, County Homelessness Committee was canceled and ATCA was also canceled, which worked out great because I came down with COVID right after the last uh, council meeting. Uh, when was it? Early of the month. So if you can't tell a little bit, I'm negative. Don't worry. I don't think anyone's gonna get sick from me. But uh, yeah, that was my week.
Mark, do you have?
Oh, and the protest was great on Saturday. Wanted to thank Police Department for that. Um, Courthouse Park was spotless. I walked by there multiple times afterwards and it looks great. So bravo to the protesters.
We're waiting with bated breath, Mark.
Yes, bated breath, the best kind. So I also attended the TCTC meeting and have really nothing to add to Vice Mayor Merrill's report. I attended the first successful uh, quorum for the Airport Land Use Committee.
How long has it been now?
Oh, about three months.
Uh, okay.
They keep trying and trying and for some reason weren't able to achieve a quorum. And we got it in, in space of fifteen or twenty minutes, approved a new cell tower south of the airport in Groveland. So all good stuff. And it's nice to have better and better communications for those of us who are actually out in the woods and may need to be helicoptered out or something. It's always a consideration. It's getting better and better. And I also attended the No Kings Protest and do have to compliment the crowd on being, I mean, doing a great job in general of, of being respectful and correct in, in exercising their point of view and First Amendment rights. And then, I mean, our city staff and police, the uh, other, who also helped provide some backup. You know, we had a great protest. The only little cloud on the horizon was that again, I saw in eighty-six, forty-seven, which is a call to kill the president on one of the signs. And that, you know, was the, disrupted it a little bit. Other than that, I mean, by two thirty, the park was practically empty and it was all very proper and respectful. We have a great community.
Okay, um, I'm going to miss the ribbon cutting for the pickleball on Friday and I'm sorry about that. But I went to the Safeway grand opening ribbon cutting and uh, that was, that was a surreal experience. I mean, you think that, you think that a corporation like Safeway could get beyond polyester plaid jackets, but no. Um, for all of their, but that, uh, actually it was very, um, uh, I was really interested. Um, the president came up, of, of the division came from Pleasanton and uh, he, this was his forty-ninth grand reopening. Um, our Safeway will now be in compliance with all Safeways. If you go into any Safeway, you'll be able to find exactly what, the way it is in Sonora. And it's huge now, the produce, yeah. Well, the, the produce section is just, I mean, you could land a plane in there. Um, but uh, the other thing that was really interesting was um, that, you know, this is a key market Safeway. It's one of their best producers. Uh, it's, there's not another Safeway until you get to Jackson or Modesto. And I, I didn't realize that it, it really is a, not only a cornerstone of our community, but it's very important to Safeway too. They, they even had a guy from Boise, from Alpersons there. But it was a, a very speedy thirty, twenty-five minutes and it was all over. Um, I went, uh, we had a Christmas Town meeting. Christmas Town is coming. And um, we do have a float for the parade, um, uh, which my brother will be driving. And I invite any council member who would like to join um, and be in the truck bed. Uh, we will provide um, hay bales and um, and cushions. And then it will be gaily decorated. And um, I went to the Valley Vista walkthrough on Friday. Um, it was interesting juxtaposition to Mr. Lemke's um, custom-built homes. I mean, their, uh, their whole sales uh, message is that a manufactured home is a brand new home, a turnkey home, a walk-in home, an affordable home. And this is the kind of housing that, um, that Tuamee County needs. Um, and both, all of the models were quite attractive and very well um, um, decor'd. But um, they still don't have sewer or power. And presumably they'll begin selling soon. Um, but it's, I think ninety-two acres is what they're planning. And they also, they, they're going to have one section of lower, uh, one-bedroom ADU kind of homes. And uh, the, the, the regular um, working class people in their three hundred and fifty thousand dollar walk-in homes. Um, uh, they'll have a whole section of those and they'll also have an upscale section. And they'll also have a community center with bocce ball and pickleball. So yeah, there's competition down on golf links. And um, and as I said, uh, there was a um, Cal Cities Roundtable. Um, and this week is United Against Hate Week, so um, we, we need to be nice to all our neighbors. And um, we need to do that all year, is what they said. So, um, and it did bring to mind all the efforts that local agencies have done to, to mitigate hate and to try and bring understanding, uh, to stand up and speak out and speak up. Um, so um, you know, we all need to get along in this world. And I think that's all I have to say. It's time to go home and have dinner. Uh, oh, yeah, I guess we need to um, adjourn the meeting.